The motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D, point zero five subdivision three B, for the purposes of discussing attorney-client privileged information.
Go ahead.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Pass.
To end the closed session, the board chair will read this statement. At this time, I will accept a motion to end the closed session and return to the open meeting.
Make motion when you return to the open meeting, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, as we get started with the topics, any future work meeting topics?
No place.
I don't think, I'm running, okay. Sorry about that, Dave.
We didn't do that.
Yeah, and I know I brought them into closed sessions and introduced them, but I'll introduce them publicly. I've got Ms. Maria Novak, Ms. Andrea Daly, who are my newest assistant county attorneys, so.
Well done. Good. Good. I hope you enjoy a long and productive career with Bell Trammy County.
Good call.
All right, now, as we move on, future work meeting topics. John?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Northern Township is in my district, and they just received a letter from the Department of Natural Resources that wasn't very encouraging. Basically, they turned down Northern Township for land use for their pond system for septic around Lake Bemidji. I'm going to read this, I'm sorry. "Thank you for your letter to Commissioner Strowman dated November 13th and for your presentation to DNR staff in August. We appreciate your efforts to address failing septic systems and protect the waters of Lake Bemidji. Unfortunately, we are not able to respond to your request at this time. The department has received several similar requests recently, and we have determined that we need to develop a standard approach to evaluating requests like these. We can reach out once the process is in place, but it sounds like your plans are fairly immediate and it will take us some time to develop a process. In the meantime, I encourage you, Township, to look for alternative locations for the project. Sincerely, blah, blah, blah." I'm recommending that we have a work meeting with Northern Township on our January 16th meeting, if that doesn't look too crowded, Tom? To have Northern Township come and talk to us about what they see as any possibility, any possibility that the county might be able to help them, whether it be land, locating land, whatever, land swaps with the state, whatever that might be. And I think it might be good for the board to offer all the board members to see kind of what I've been seeing on a weekly basis as I go to their meetings, and so kind of get up to speed and make sure that we as a board are supportive. I want to make sure that I'm not speaking for the board on my behalf without the board all chiming in on that. So that's, that's where, thank you.
All right? All right?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, yes.
All right, Commissioner Carlson, just as a point of clarification, you're expecting a work session. Would they be invited here, not a joint meeting?
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. New funding streams for Public Health and Community Health Board.
We thought we'd take this opportunity, um, as the budget is coming to, um, uh, close for twenty twenty-three to just inform you of some new funding for sources uh, that will be coming in through Public Health and our C H B. And, um, on your attachment, you'll see that, uh, Beltrami County, um, Public Health has been awarded twenty-five thousand, uh, five hundred and fifty-three dollars through an U S Aging Grant, that's a partnership that we have with Sanford in providing vaccines to adult population. And so through, uh, the next five to six months, we'll be doing at least a minimum of ten vaccine clinics to individuals that would um, otherwise not have access, uh, to like our flu vaccine, COVID vaccine. Um, and that will all be funded work, um, through one of our current nursing positions. Um, the second fun, Sunday funding source is through Public Health. Um, being awarded, um, the grant has not been signed yet, but we have been informed that we'll be awarded, um, one oh nine oh twenty-three on an annual basis um, to support emergency, uh, preparedness as the result of the twenty twenty-three legislative session. And then in addition, our, um, Public Health Program will, um, also be funded an estimated of two twenty-five forty, um, eight. Uh, that was just approved, uh, by the Shack Committee last week, uh, the formula for, uh, coming up with that amount. And so that's not an exact amount yet, but that's the estimated amount. Um, that particular funding will be an annual basis also as a result of the twenty twenty-three legislative session. And that, uh, funding is designed to support, um, uh, as a result of the cost and capacity, uh, survey, uh, that was done, um, at M D H.
Uh, how much was that, Amy?
The third one?
Yes.
That one is two twenty-five forty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any question? Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
University of Minnesota Extension update.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Tony Hanson. I'm the Regional Director with the University of Minnesota Extension, uh, working currently with Beltrami County Extension Committee. Uh, I started in my position last July, or I should say May, um, first met with the Extension Committee in July. Lisa Logering out of the Regional Office in Crookston, uh, previously had been working with Beltrami County for a couple of years. I am based out of the Brainerd Regional Extension Office. Uh, wanted to appear before you today just to introduce myself to the, the greater board. I've been lucky enough to work with Commissioners Anderson and Carlson through a couple of Extension Committee meetings here in the past six months. Um, we anticipated or planned to have Frankie Moore, our county four H educator, join us today. Unfortunately, she's homesick with a kid, um, as is the season for that. Um, so she sends her regards and, uh, included a report for us to review today, and I will note a few highlights from that. But first off, uh, just wanted to give an overview of, uh, current extension staffing within Beltrami County. Uh, as we are all, uh, fairly new, uh, Frankie, uh, joined the Beltrami County Extension Team as our four H educator. Uh, this past spring, she, uh, had previously worked in an interim four H educator role in, uh, Red Lake. And, uh, prior to that, had actually been a support staff here in Beltrami County at the Extension Office. So we're thankful when we're able to bring somebody back who's familiar with the county, um, and was able to dive right in as she has been able to do. Kim Tingam is our Extension Support Staff who works out at our Extension Office at the fairgrounds. She joined the team last spring as well, and I work frequently with her, uh, touching base. She does a lot of the support for the general office operations for the Extension Office. Um, as with many counties, we get inquiries on all sorts of topics that we are often either, uh, working to connect with Frankie, our local educator, or referring citizens to our statewide resources, whether it's our, uh, agriculture helpline, gardening questions, and our statewide gardening team. All sorts of things like that. Kim also works, uh, to do a lot of support of our, our four H program. Certainly, there are many things there. We have a very active program here in Beltrami County. Uh, she works, uh, twenty-nine hours a week out there, and so we're very happy to have her support in that position. And I've enjoyed getting to continue to stay in touch with her frequently on just how things are going here at our local county office. My role as a regional director is to work with eight different counties here in the northern region of Minnesota. Um, I help to facilitate our quarterly Extension Committee meetings, uh, where we work on our Extension Budget Development throughout the year. Uh, get a lot of updates about the local programming going on with Extension. Uh, and it's really a fantastic opportunity for the local leadership to provide direction and input, not only in our staffing in the county, but the direction that Extension should be moving in the county and needs that should be addressed. Extension is often affiliated most directly with four H or youth development. A lot of times we'll use that interchangeably in Extension, and it is of our four departments, the largest one and perhaps has the largest footprint in the state of Minnesota. Uh, Extension also has three other departments, including Agriculture and Natural Resources, Family Health and Wellbeing, and Community Development. One of the info sheets that I've attached today, uh, just notes some different statistics about Extension. One that I like to impress upon for people is that our Extension Team, uh, two-thirds of it is located throughout Greater Minnesota. We are, we have a presence in every state or every county, I should say, here in Minnesota. Um, we have many regional offices, and so there's a large presence with Extension throughout Greater Minnesota. Um, often when we're being affiliated with the university, there's a lot of assumptions of most of the people work on a campus in the Twin Cities or one of the other major campuses in the university system. That info sheet also gives a quick description of our, uh, statewide Extension Budget for twenty twenty-three and the breakdown of where Extension is funded from, including our twenty-two point seven percent of funding that comes from counties. And one of the parts I have enjoyed thus far in working with Extension is just the accountability and transparency with local county investment in the positions that the county funds, um, and a lot of great return on that, um, being able to come back and share with local stakeholders the impact that, uh, the Extension Staff are having locally. To talk a little bit more about our staffing, before I move on to a few other things I'd like to highlight. Uh, we are actually in the process of hopefully filling one of our, uh, positions here in Beltrami County that's been vacant since last spring. Uh, Beltrami County has had a SNAP Ed and Health and Wellness Coordinator position, uh, for a while. And the, the person previously in that position moved on last spring. Uh, we are working to promote awareness of this position. Uh, it's an important role that we simply absolutely want to make sure it is continued to be filled here in the county. The Extension Committee has been very engaged in hearing about the, the progress of the search, um, offering to help promote this position as well. And so that is a application that's still out there and currently available, uh, with the most recent deadline coming up of January first uh, for submitting applications. Uh, that position does a lot of nutrition education, uh, whether with schools, after-school programming, uh, working with food shelves in the county and not just serving Bemidji, but also, uh, other communities within Beltrami County. And so we're hoping to fill that here. I've been working a lot in my role, uh, with the regional directors who supervise the SNAP Ed Program in Minnesota. With Frankie not being able to attend today, I just wanted to highlight a few things from the program summary document that she, uh, included with the meeting packet for today. And it's nice being able to work with a number of counties. I'm able to kind of share some of the perspective of participation compared to, uh, surrounding counties. And I can say that, uh, the Beltrami County Four H Program is doing very well, um, and has a great amount of participation with the two hundred and thirty-four youth en- enrolled in the Beltrami County Four H Program currently, uh, with that number being up about sixteen percent in the past four years. During COVID, um, we saw a lot of four H participation shrink statewide, coming back out of, uh, a lot of that. Uh, in the past year, uh, many enrollment numbers around the state increased. It's promising to see some counties where that four H enrollment, um, has continued to increase or sustain, um, now that we're really coming out of times of COVID. Uh, it's, there's a lot of new clubs being formed or groups getting back together. Uh, and so it's very good to see, and I'm very excited to have Frankie here on this team to continue to support this very active, uh, four H organization here in the county. Uh, on the backside of her info sheet, Frankie notes that, uh, there were one thousand six hundred and eight four H exhibits at the county fair this year. Uh, just a very great showing, um, from our youth who submitted many, many exhibits, uh, for our wide range of categories at the county fair. Uh, Frankie also noted some current club activities going on within the, uh, county here. And you'll see many of those are related to community service, a lot of the, the four H clubs, um, participating in one type of donation program or another, uh, partnering or providing donations to the community food shelves in the county. And finally, she notes some current and upcoming programming opportunities such as the, um, State Shoot Program, our beginner air rifle or air pistol programs, Dog, Horse and Poultry Bowl, the archery program continuing on, and other things coming up in the spring. I do hope to be back sometime later this spring to, um, have Frankie share some more information about, uh, our updated enrollment in the County Four H Program and to share more about what she is working on here in Beltrami County. But those are the main things I wanted to highlight for you all today. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have about Extension here in the county and what we're up to.
Any questions for Tony?
Yes. Mr. Chair. Tony, thanks for coming in. Appreciate your, uh, work, certainly supportive of your efforts, uh, the U of M Extension and, and, uh, Beltrami County here. Uh, I was wondering what you might have to say in regards to, um, where you think the Department of Agriculture could be, Minnesota Department of Agriculture could be, um, maybe a little more supportive in either any of your programs, um, or here in Beltrami County. Like if you could think of some, like, maybe some low-hanging fruit or, or a certain program that the Extension, uh, is involved with here in Beltrami County. Where do you think, uh, um, the egg commissioner could, could lend a little more support?
It's a good question, um, and I think often when I'm asked about these types of things in the county, there's, um, typically two tracts that the, the proposals or recommendations will fall into. Uh, one of them is the, what I try to prioritize in my role as a regional director in highlighting, um, really the, the regional or statewide resources that Extension provides, uh, and many of those, you know, extensions working on frequently. It those are sometimes things I do more to highlight for awareness here in the county, um, and work on steering my colleagues in Extension to host programs in particular places where we feel there are communities that are looking at these needs. With the Department of Agriculture in particular, maybe the other component that we would consider, uh, and that I work with frequently is, uh, possibility of what local staffing we think would be important, uh, to consider for, uh, a role in the county or within the region. Um, and that's a, a lot of the work that I do in discussions with the Extension Committee itself. This, in particular, in the past year, Extension statewide has seen, um, so some unique partnerships pop up. We've seen some soil and water conservation districts come into more money that they anticipated with the, the newest state budget. And their interest in getting some people more out in the fields to be able to serve, uh, county residents, being able to conduct farm visits, um, be able to assist with more advanced soil testing, um. We have, uh, as part of our sustainability team, some continued interest in like water testing, um, and that's going on more so in Cas, Cas County right now with some continued programming on there. In everything related to Extension, I appreciate that these are very driven from the local level and the input of Extension Committee members, uh, the organizations that those members are a part of, certainly our commissioners and the input that they have. I, I'm met with Administrator Barry here a couple of months ago to share that my goal is really to do a lot of listening as I do spend time here in the county, um, to see what needs and topics are being brought forth to the committee. Um, and what we're seeing collectively as a group is some needs to be addressed, and so, um, really with looking at additional support from the Department of Agriculture, it I would like to hear more, maybe in future meetings from the, the county board at large, and what you all are seeing is some needs that could be addressed because I just as well from the Department of Agriculture, I would like to see what Extension can do to better bring in some resources from our statewide egg teams as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, John.
Uh, Tony, I just want to say thanks. I've, I've seen you everywhere. I, I, sometimes I mistake that you live in Bemidji. I mean, and then you were at, uh, Breezy Point for the Mississippi Headwaters Board, and I appreciate you're showing up a lot. So thank you very much for doing that. I appreciate it. It's, it's noticed.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, John actually stole my thunder too. I was, I was going to say, I was just surprised when we came to the AMC Director Meeting and hear you were taking notice of that as well, so. Thank you for, for being visible and sharing that, that, that's half the battle, I think.
I appreciate your words. Thank you very much.
You bet. Okay, let's, uh, move on to the, uh, resolution of support for the UPS workers. Tom? There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this item was recommended for inclusion on the board's, um, agenda after the listening session that occurred last week on the United States Postal Service uh, occurred, and, uh, because the county does do significant business with the United States Postal Service and the disruptions do impact the county, and, uh, we've had to make some arrangements here also internally as it relates to our operation regarding to delivery of package inside our campus and whatnot. Uh, I've included this on the board agenda for your consideration. The, um, the resolution of support is pretty straightforward and, uh, does just that. It just suggests that the county support the activities of the postal service and, uh, encourage resources, uh, sufficient to have the postal service do their, do their job. I know that Commissioner Gould was helpful in putting this together as well, uh, so he may have additional information that he might want to share with the board as well. But, uh, that's what I have for you tonight for your consideration. I will let you know that this is not yet included on the board's regular agenda, so, uh, it's just meant to be here for discussion only. And if it is something that the board wishes to, uh, pursue, you'll want to make sure that you amend the regular agenda to have that considered at that time.
Thank you.
Joe. Mr. Chair, yeah, um, I, I drafted this resolution and, and I, uh, shared it with you, Mr. Chair and, and Administrator Barry. So thank you for including it on the, on the work meeting today to, to, uh, talk about. I think we, uh, um, should, uh, raise awareness of the struggles that are happening with, uh, our post office locally. There was a big meeting, Commissioner Carlson, uh, Commissioner Gosvig and I, uh, were all in attendance, and there was a, um, a lot of people there. There was probably, I don't know, maybe, maybe a hundred and fifty, two hundred people or something that, you know, came and went throughout the night, but, but. Maybe a hundred and fifty, two hundred people or something that, you know, came and went throughout the night, but but. Thank you for greater, Bemidji for hosting the. The venue Senators Klobuchar and Smith were in town lending their support and and. You know, with. Basically, the. Mandate from Amazon and and the worker shortage and and the long hours that are. USPS mail carriers are putting putting in and and how it relates to county business. You know, I I would just. Hope that we could move this to the regular agenda and and just provide some general support. I know the. Bemidji City Council is in the midst of doing the same. So I'll leave it at that for any other comments or questions for the board.
Any comments or questions?
I'm not sure if it's fair. My dad was a rural letter carrier.
I'm very much supportive of this.
My grandpa was a postmaster, so it's in the genes here.
The reason I ask is I don't have any problem with putting it on the consent unless you would want it more on the other.
I don't have a problem with it on the consent either.
I would like to see it as a regular standalone.
Very good, that's where. All right, let's move on to the legislative platform.
Thanks for doing that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As we have routinely done each year. We put together the legislative platform for your consideration. For the next legislative session, the twenty twenty-four session. That session will begin Monday, February the twelfth, so a little bit later start than certainly they had this year or the year prior. And it will run through May twentieth of next year, so it'll be a little bit shorter as well. As we have done, we have surveyed the department heads and. Asked for as well as your input, their input in development of what seem to be issues that are pressing for us that we'd like to have the legislature aware of. And potentially working on. And so, you know, we had a long list last year and. I'm pleased to say that there were several things on that list that we were we were very successful in accomplishing. As you'll hear a little bit later in the presentation this this evening. We were successful in having some movement on Pilt formula changes. Program aid changes, some additional funding that came to the county as well. The local option sales tax approval, or a number of things that actually went very well for us in this last legislative session. And of course, this last legislative session, we had the assistance of a legislative lobbyist that was also very critical in helping us move some. Of that legislation forward. So tonight we want to talk about a couple of things. One. The legislative platform that's been developed for you. I distributed that a few weeks ago to you, so you had some time to kind of just look at it. You'd want to hit you cold with it today. But then also we want to talk about whether or not you'd like me to pursue a renewal of the legislative lobbyist contract. So we can talk about both of those things. Before we get to the contract and the lobbyist part. I thought it might be helpful for key staff to run through the legislative platform issues. Give you a little bit better understanding and background of the issues and why those issues are important to us. And in particular, what we are hoping to achieve by advancing these particular initiatives. Now, keep in mind that there are a number of legislative platforms that are developed that impact the county. One of them is at the national level with the National Association of Counties. And NACO, the National Association of Counties, has platforms that are really important to us. On occasion, we get to get involved in some of those, not currently just yet, but certainly one of the ones we've been monitoring from. For some time is the loss of healthcare when someone is incarcerated. Because that has enormous financial impacts on our county operation. Because we end up picking up that cost. So that is something, again, I believe NACO is pursuing. We've been supportive of that. And sometimes we we provide, you know, supportive briefs or emails or those types of things. So we're still working on that level as well. Additionally, the AMC or the. Association of Minnesota Counties is another organization that puts together legislative platform. Those of us who participated in the District Two meeting were able to influence that platform. In fact, I'm I'm pleased to say that of the five of the, I think they had probably twenty something. Items on there that they were trying to prioritize. The five that we collectively selected actually were the five that were selected by the entire district, so that was kind of good news. And then, of course, we develop our own platform, and so we have lots of lots of things going on at the same time. So for our specific platform, I'll just run through, we have ten items that were identified. The first one is the state bonding bill. You're well familiar with this. Of course, we were not six, well, I shouldn't say we weren't successful in getting in the bonding bill, but that's in process right now. We submitted a formal application. We had the Senate and the and the House committees come and look at the facility for the jail. And again, we made the request for fifty million dollars of the state legislature for to be included in the bonding bill. And or separate appropriation or combination of the two. So we feel like that work is sort of in process and it makes sense to kind of continue that at the forefront of our efforts. And in the hope that we can maybe get some additional funding for the jail project and lessen the local burden. On that facility, which of course the state is largely behind in the requirement to upgrade and expand. The second item is the sales tax exemption exemption for new jail construction. This was another piece of legislation that we wrote last year. Unfortunately, or this year, I should say. Unfortunately, it was not included, so it didn't even get a hearing. But it is something that we want to pursue to ensure that we are exempted from having to pay state sales tax on really a state mandated facility. It just makes sense. And so the impact of the county is significant. Because we believe that we could save potentially one point eight to one point nine million dollars. Of sales tax collections that the state would get from us and our taxpayers for that facility. If we could get this exception. Now, the exception is allowed under statute, but it has to be specifically authorized, and so that's what we're seeking is that authorization. Just to keep in mind that for every dollar, though, that we have to bond. There is almost a twofold cost to the county. In that amount, so the one point eight or one point nine million I was saying. We could maybe potentially avoid. Actually, if you don't have to bond for that, could be almost twice that amount in savings over the thirty-year period, so. It is significant and we do feel like it's something that should be pursued. So that's the first and second items on the legislative platform. I'll turn it over to Ann and first staff now. They're going to take the next couple of items, you know, five or six items. And then the number nine and number ten will be will be. Introduced by Bruce and his team. So with that, Ann or Jeff? All right, perfect.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I don't have to introduce myself. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is the third one on your list here, the behavioral health continuum of care. Last year, we we asked for the legislature to continue funding. The adult mental health initiatives and to make sure that as that funding rolls out, that it continued coming to the regions. Our region was was looked at as getting a larger, larger piece of that pie. Now, that hasn't come to fruition yet. We still believe it is coming. But we want to make sure that 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 the AMHI is the adult mental health initiatives continue to be funded. With those dollars, we're able to support mental health programming throughout our region and our regional partners on this. Are it's Beltrami County, Clearwater County, Hubbard County and Lake of the Woods Counties. That's our that's our mental health initiatives. Counties. And we all work together to support mental health programming throughout the region. And we, each county has a certain portion of those dollars that that they use within that. A lot of ours. Will use towards, will will put towards armed services and those types of programming to in order to keep people in the community. Now, the second part that we are looking at with this is continuing to. To build on the the continuum of care as it pertains to our most difficult individuals. People we have a difficult time placing. I can tell you right now, we've been really lucky in the past. Month or so, we've dodged several bullets that have been really challenged, that would have been really, really challenging for us to deal with. And again, the first one I'm going to talk about are the kids stuff, and that's where this has been landing. We have, we have several kids out there that we're working with that are very behaviorally challenged. They may have developmental disabilities, they may have mental health disabilities that do not allow them to be charged with. Crimes or they may get charged with crimes, but they're not going to be. Can't even put them into into detention because they don't fit there, right? So we have very few options for placing many of these really difficult kids. They go somewhere, then they get kicked out. And then they the we find out, well, they're going to be dropped off on your doorstep and you got to find a place for them. And there are none. We, we just because we have fantastic workers who really go above and beyond. We thought we might have one. Left today with us, but we were able to locate a facility down in Twin Cities that is going to be able to take that individual. But we're, we need the state to continue developing crisis beds for these really challenging youth and adults. Treatment beds for these youth and adults as they as they continue to come forward. It just, there just aren't enough beds. I'll just a quick history lesson with the AMHIs. The reason the AMHIs were developed. Was at the time that they were closing all the beds. So they put money into the AMHIs, so the AMHIs would support people in the communities. Well, that's great, and it's done a good job of it. But we're seeing more and more individuals who are have the higher and higher needs, so we're we're really challenged with that. So we want to see, we want to see money put into that infrastructure of building those programs. Another one that we'd like to see more of is SUD treatment, substance use disorder for. For families, you know, for for moms and dads, moms and or dads and their children to be there with them. There are very few of those facilities here in the state. I think would be. I believe would be really beneficial and and a positive step to have more of that available. So those are some of the infrastructure pieces that we'd like to see as far as building the continuum of care. Then the next one on our list was cost share for direct care and treatment. I think one of the things that we asked for last year, and I and I think it was already alluded to. Was we had an individual that was at an local regional treatment center. And it was many, many, many thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars that we owed because that individual was being held there. By the state. And and they that person couldn't go to St. Peter, where people who are mentally ill and dangerous are supposed to be housed. Because there wasn't space at St. Peter. While they were sitting there, we were incurring the bill for it because they didn't meet the the level of care that they were supposed to be receiving. We did get that changed, and as was talked about, we'd like to see that retroactively be able to cover the costs. Because we got it changed, but it didn't help us as much as we would have liked because it didn't go back far enough to our back bills. We also like to see that expanded so that when a person is one of our local CBHHs. When they're supposed to be moved out, if there isn't someplace for them to go and they continue to be held there on commitment, we're being charged for those as well. So we would like to see more more dollars, either either the cost of care eliminated or at least reduced. Further to the counties so that we're not being charged with those those. Costs. And for us, it's going to be nearly a million dollars this year. It's a it's a big chunk of change. And then the last one that I wanted to chat about was the elimination of the county share when it comes to the behavioral health fund. So our costs are rising as our population rises. One of the things that often is associated with poverty is chemical chemical use. They're oftentimes go hand in hand. Beltrami County is consistently one of the most impoverished counties in the state. Which means we have a larger number of people that are are oftentimes using chemicals. So what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Is it the poverty? Is it the is it the the funding for the programs? Where where, how do we stop that ball from rolling downhill? So the issue hits us harder than nearly any other county because our tax base is challenged and we have a hard time meeting these rising costs. Which then creates more poverty, which then creates more need and so on. And then the other thing is that's happened within the past five years. We've talked about it a little bit is the advent of direct access. So an individual can go to a a chemical health provider. Get a chemical health assessment, a comprehensive assessment is what they're called these days. It used to be rule twenty-fives. But now they're comprehensive assessments, so you can get a comprehensive assessment and then. That provider can prescribe you to go to to a level of treatment, whether it's in their own facility or somewhere else. We don't have any control anymore. We used to have some control because it came, the dollars all came through us and the request for for placement came through us. But now providers can make placements directly on their own. I think the bigger issue is just our rising population and the poverty levels. But it is something that we need to keep our eye on because we don't know, we don't have any control. Once providers are making those those placements. And then we have a direct share. So we're asking the state to, we'd like to see the state cover the cost again, either at a reduced rate. Or completely eliminate the cost of care for for counties. Again, for Beltrami County, we're going to probably be in that. Two hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and seventy thousand dollar range in paying for the county share of this. It's not a giant number, but it is a it's a significant number that we need to be very aware of. And it's it's. At this point, it's pretty much out of our control. It hasn't risen. As much as we might have thought under the old circumstances. I think it's it's more. A case of our population is rising and the need is rising is rising. So. Any questions? Those are the three that I wanted to cover. I was asked to keep short, so.
John. Sorry, Jeff, real quick, a number three, is that maybe also an AMC? Legislative issue?
I I think it might be, and I think Max has looked at it as well. That's the Minnesota Association of of County Social Services Administrators.
Okay, so hopefully we'll get coming from more than one direction.
Those those last two are so closely related because they're both about both about cost of a cost share.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Okay, the next section.
Good evening, Amy Bowles, Director of Public Health, and I have number six on our list. And that is access to community health workers with adequate billing for the services that they provide. If you remember, we had it approved to be able to research the idea of being able to have a community health worker. Join our staff in twenty twenty-four. And with that, comes some amazing opportunities where with a community health worker, we can help fill in some of the gaps where. Our current staff don't have the opportunity or the time to provide that additional education. So for example, if. And if you've ever been hospitalized or family members been hospitalized and you come home and then you're trying to remember all the things that they were told. You know, what medications to take, when their follow-up appointments are, and then you're trying to figure out who to call when you don't, you know, know the answer to a question, right? These community health workers help fill in gaps like that. They help prevent hospital readmission. They help. Prevent ER visits and they really help bridge the gap for the services that we're already providing. But where those gaps are. One of the stark differences between a CHW and a social worker or a nurse. Is is the cost of reimbursement for those services. So where a nurse might be able to be reimbursed from a pair. Source, let's say thirty dollars for a visit, CHW will only be reimbursed maybe ten dollars for that visit. And so what we're asking is that not only to continued support of the CHWs within our our workforce. Because they would benefit not only public health, but health and human services as a whole. But to encourage our funding sources to provide better reimbursement for the services that they provide. And that's what I have.
Thank you. John, is there any opportunity with AmeriCorps folks? I know that I think. Ann, correct me if I'm wrong, but do we have one or two AmeriCorps folks? Or is there anything opportunity there?
So with AmeriCorps, there is a a program that they have where they can work with like teachers and for to impact us. They do have a public health AmeriCorps program. We did receive a grant through AmeriCorps. Where if we have an applicant who's interested in working with us, we would be able to have that individual come in and they would. Do work being paid by AmeriCorps. But we don't have anybody applying for that position currently. Yeah, any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Amy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Anne Lynn South, Director of Health and Human Services. I stood before this board in January of this year and we talked about legislative priorities. And I'm pretty excited to report back to this board that there were three priorities that I discussed in January that. Went through the legislative session. That um went through the legislative session and we have some really positive progress. Um, whether it's achieving the goal fully or partially. Um, so I had spoke with the board about um sunsetting our diversionary work program, our cash assistance program. Um, due to some redundancies with that program and that is the legislation passed that and that is due to be sunsetted in twenty twenty six. Um, I spoke with you about um simplifying the user experience and decreasing the administrative burden. Around family cash assistance eligibility programs and that also is going to occur in twenty twenty six. Um, and then we had a request through Health and Human Services to increase funding. For public health to support the required capabilities, which you heard from Amy earlier today. Um, they did receive some significant ongoing funding for that. Um, so we've seen a lot of success in our legislative priorities already. I'm bringing back to you today two priorities that I did speak to you about in January of twenty three and I think are very important to remain on this list into twenty four. The first is number seven, which is Health and Human Services System Transformation and Modernization. And as you well know, Minnesota is one of just a handful of states in this country that manage state supervised county administered programming. And so because of that, the state provides the majority of the necessary technology infrastructure that we utilize. So in Health and Human Services, we have approximately a dozen state provided technology systems that support our programs. From child protection to cash assistance eligibility. The newest of these systems was developed in twenty fourteen, Metz. I'm sure you guys have heard of that program. Um, and that does continue to underperform to this day. The oldest of those systems is over thirty years old. And some recent technology investments that the state has allowed for is easier access to apply for programs. But unfortunately, it hasn't, the state hasn't provided any um increased technology support for the administration of those programs. So what we saw in the twenty three session is that the legis legislature actually passed some historic funding. For state technology investments, um over two hundred million. But counties have yet to hear what the state's plans are to address the issues with these inefficient systems. As well as that amount of funding, unfortunately, it sounds like a large number, but unfortunately, it isn't enough to support the multiple system areas that need. To be updated. Um, it also doesn't support the cost that counties incur when implementing these systems. Which is one of the key things I spoke to this board about in January when we discussed this legislative priority. Is that when the state does system upgrades, it does put an administrative burden onto county staff when we have to roll out those systems. And so we would like to have adequate funding to support that when it occurs. Um, unfortunately, county residents and staff bear the burden of inefficient state technology, both in service provision. But also in staff satisfaction and retention. Um, these multiple workarounds outdated and complex processes and the fragmentation of the systems. Is not producing the outcomes that counties need from these mission critical systems. So what we're requesting is this board's support um to direct technology infrastructure funding. To the administrative systems in need of being updated at the state level. And also to provide counties funding for the implementation costs that new systems will create. So any questions on number seven?
Uh, John, but just again, I'm guessing that that's maybe an AMC priority as well?
It has, yes, it's Maxa and AMC have prioritized this and. Like I said, there's been some success in the fact that the legislature did approve a large um amount for funding this. It's just how that funding is being used is in question at this point. Counties haven't been made aware of what the plans are. And I know that that appropriation did not include the support for counties that we need.
Yes.
Well, it would depend, I would think, a percentage basis of what is allowed for state system infrastructure update, technology update. A percentage of that would be allowed for counties for that administration at the county level. Okay, number eight, um childcare. We know that childcare remains a critical community issue. And we've been working on this issue for a number of years. And we have seen a lot of creativity. We have seen some growth. Um, we have seen some new center based care come to fruition. And we recently um opened some special family childcare licensing through Saint Phillips, which was very exciting. Um, but unfortunately, we are remaining pretty stagnant with the family providers. We still remain about that eighty. Uh, we have about eighty family providers and we've been at that number for quite some time. We'd really like to see that grow. Um, we know that childcare growth is gonna be a collaborative effort in the community. It's gonna take um. A multifaceted approach with businesses, um government agencies coming together and coming up with creativity. Um, but we also know we need legislative support as well. Um, some str- uh, some steps in the right direction are the National Association of Minnesota Regulation. And the Department of Human Services are currently working with providers and licensers to consider aspects of the licensing process. So basically, they're doing some ex- exploration, some surveys of what the licensing process looks like and ways to maybe simplify that process. But I think it's important that we continue to request the legislative support for regulatory simplification for childcare. As well as support for creativity to allow communities to develop their own unique childcare solutions. What works in greater Minnesota and specifically in Beltrami County might not work elsewhere. And we want to have the flexibility to respond to the demands of our area.
Mr. Chair. Um, I know recently there's been a a proposal, legislative proposal that would cap. A family's expenses on childcare at seven percent of their income and, you know, I. I I like that idea. Um, however, I'm also concerned about the 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 business aspect of it. That childcare provider's budget. Um, if that passes, you know, everybody's gonna be paying a different amount. And and these childcare providers that are going above and beyond right now are gonna be, you know, struggling what to do financially, so. I'm just wondering what you what you have to uh comment on on that uh proposal, if you're aware of it, uh if. If there's been a a response from the childcare community on that bill.
I haven't heard anything, Commissioner Gould. What I would say is it would be important to consider a. Public supplement portion of that bill. If there is a cap on childcare costs at seven percent of income. Um, it would dramatically affect a provider's ability to be viable if there wasn't some way to make up the difference. If it wasn't equaling out their monthly amount that they charge. Um, so I'd have to look at that bill and see perhaps that is already in there. Um, but we what we want to do is make it easy for providers to s- to be viable, to stay providers. Um, affordability is a huge issue for families. We do have a childcare assistance program that people can access. Um, and we do have funding in that program, so I encourage people to apply for childcare assistance, which helps with the family's costs for childcare. But if a family can't find a provider to take their child, that C cap program doesn't help them. So I think we have to consider both sides of that coin when we're moving forward with legislation.
Thanks.
Um, you mentioned that Saint Phillips had gotten their program rolled up, uh, I believe there were a couple others that weren't. First Lutheran Church and Sanford also looking to do something like that or what you are you aware of those or?
I have heard of some uh businesses that are looking into the process. Um, but I don't know that they're very far down the road yet. Um, and I think First Lutheran is taking a pause to reassess their plan.
Okay, and then, you know, at one point we had Greater Bemidji working on it and I know that kind of got sidebarred. And we were actually even potentially looking at using the first floor of the Health and Human Services building. Um, any thoughts on revitalizing and trying to get that back on track?
The first floor of the Community Service Center?
Yeah, and just working with Greater Bemidji to try to, you know, to. Re- put it back on the front burner with, so to speak, with regard to childcare.
Well, I will say that um we work with Greater Bemidji very closely on a number of things, including childcare. So I still work with staff from Greater Bemidji on making progress in the realm of childcare. Um, as far as specifically using the Community Service Center building. I will say we would have to come back with some kind of planning around that and see what the boards um. What the board would support around it. Operating a childcare is not to be taken lightly. It is a very serious undertaking. It has like, like I'm saying, it has lots of regulations. And I don't know of any other counties that have taken on operation of a childcare. Um, the space being utilized for a childcare, we have discussed in depth. And unfortunately, we haven't had any providers take us up on that at this point.
Yeah, and just staying, you know, trying to think outside the box. I know we talked to, I believe, her about maybe like Pine Pals, I think, uh, as possibly. You know, working with them, I I'm selfishly thinking of it as a an attracting tool for county employees. We employ a lot of people. And a lot of those, a lot of those employees might need childcare. And even if we did some kind of a a benefit, uh, we work for the county, you have opportunity to get a seat or seats for childcare. Um, right here at the county, I mean, it could be a a really good tool, just trying to. Always keep prodding and and that to keep uh keep the childcare thing on the front burner.
Yes, it's an important topic, Commissioner Goswicke, so I appreciate that.
I I believe that's what Sanford's intent was, is that they would fill that with Sanford employee. Children and then if there were any other spaces available, I believe that's moving forward. Anyone else know about that?
Tom? Mr. Chair, I could give you a a brief update on the the C S C building. I don't know about regional efforts that have extended beyond what we initially intended to be. A a pretty comprehensive public private partnership on the whole childcare uh provider opportunity at that facility. Um, as Anne had mentioned, that has not been something that has gained traction. Um, the childcare issue has been something that I know has been going on and discussion wise for a long time. And for the, at least the last few years that I've been a part of the county, uh, the effort to try to move. Uh, a childcare provider into that building and have it sustainably work has just not unfortunately come to fruition. Um, you should be aware because we'll want to know as a staff, um, if. We we need to know kind of what your intentions are with that space, so. Um, as you know, since the school vacated that space, um, we have been doing a remodel. Of the public health area, which has consumed some of that space and shrunk it down. Uh, we have about seven, eight thousand square feet left of that space. And we have been negotiating with another tenant who wants expanded space. And wants to relocate from a a location inside that building to this space. Um, they would only however consume about half of that space, which leaves the other half available for uh leasing. Of course, as your leasing manager, it's in, I think, county's best interest to try to lease as much space as we can as soon as we can. Cause that's that's good revenue for the county. Uh, that space uh can produce anywhere from about two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars annually in revenue if we can get it fully leased out. So, uh, I just met with Steve uh this morning, Steve Shadrick, our Facilities uh Director. On uh putting in a bid for G S A that's requesting additional space. That space would consume the remainder of this space in that uh C S C building, so. Um, I just want you to know that behind the scenes, as your leasing manager, I'm trying to get that space leased. If you have other ideas and want us to hold off and and preserve it for childcare, we would want to know that before we get too too much further. In pursuing these various tenants, uh, so that we had that opportunity because otherwise. It seems. Um, like we may have a difficult conversation or two in the future. Provided uh with with these potential tenants, if if it doesn't end up being something the counting board likes. So I guess on that issue, although it's separate from the the topic of legislative priorities. It is opportunistic to kind of just talk through, give you that brief update because uh we we just want to make sure we're. Doing the work that you expect and desire us to.
Anyone else?
My direction would be that I don't want to hold up. If we have the opportunity to lease that space, I I don't want us to. Hold it for years, thinking that we might eventually be able to utilize it as a childcare. Um, if we have the opportunity to lease it and bring in revenue, we need to do that, is my thought on it. I don't know how the other commissioners think, but. Um, that would be my thought. We can, you know, certainly look at other facilities for childcare centers, if you will, so.
Perfect.
I agree with that as well.
Excellent, well. Thank you for that clarification. Um, of course, we won't enter into any leases without your approval. You have to sign those. So you'll see those and and have another opportunity to uh discuss your desires then.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Transportation. Bruce?
Good evening, afternoon. Bruce Hasbrouck, Public Works Director, County Engineer. I'm gonna cover the transportation and solid waste items. Uh, transportation, a lot of the funding we get in the highway department doesn't come through the state. Your gas tax, license tab fees, uh, the Highway Users Trust Fund is a big revenue source for us. Um, but then there's also grant monies that do come through the state. And last year. Thankfully, there was a a nice uh increase in the transportation funding that we get. Uh, so that hopefully is helping us cover some more costs, but uh on the grant side. Uh, this being a bonding year, uh, there are some programs that hopefully that the state keeps funding. Uh, they're listed there, the local bridges, local road improvement program, greater transit. Uh, Safe Routes to School, Active Transportation, the Local Road Wetland Replacement. Uh, those. Uh, programs uh receive their money through the bonding. And so the state needs to put some bonding dollars in those to keep them going. Uh, we've been successful in in getting some of those grants, the local bridges. We have two bridge projects coming up this year that were funded out of that uh program. Uh, the Local Road Improvement Program, we've had multiple projects uh that have been funded out of there. The recent one was uh last year's project up on twenty. You know, we got a million dollars out of that that program. The Safe Routes to School Act of Transportation, we've made some uh applications for those. The local, the Local Road Wetland Replacement Program, we use that every time we have a road project that impacts wetlands. Um, that is a program that the state has in place for public transportation projects. They go out there and they create the wetlands, so they have the wetland banks. So when we have a transportation project that impacts a wetland. Of whatever size, we can pull out of that bank that they have already sitting there. So it makes our process way easier than having to create our own bank, you know, every county creating their own bank or relying on private banks out there and go get those. So that was, that program is definitely a a bonus to have that in place. So on the transportation side, I guess we're hoping that um this can be in there and that the state keeps funding those programs that rely on those bonding dollars. I guess maybe I'll answer any questions on transportation first.
Any questions on that? Yes, Joe.
I should know this, uh, but when you apply for Safe Routes to School grant funding. Is it similar to M M B, like when we apply uh for the jail for a bonding bill? Does it go to the governor to possibly be put into the governor's bonding bill or? Okay.
So those, these programs here, they. I'm gonna say they're separate, so they get the dollars from the bonding, so they gotta be in the bond bonding bills, whichever. Uh, but then they're administered by, a lot of them are administered by like uh the state aid, the office that we work with on all of our state aid projects. But the um Safe Routes to School and the Active Transportation are both. Both run by our state aid.
I do know that Safe Routes to School is pretty much always in the bonding bill. Um, but I can't recall if specific projects are called out in that. It's just funding the program itself. And then. You've applied, so maybe that money would go to the grant.
Okay, yeah. Yep. Okay. Solid waste, here it's the opposite. Uh, we get a small amount of money through the state for solid waste. Rest of that comes through our our solid waste assessment. Um, but there are some state programs that we get some funding from for solid waste through the state. Um, the big one, annual one is the SCORE, so that's more for the recycling. There's a SCORE program out there. I can't remember what SCORE stands for, but uh it is, it's to help us on uh promoting and and recycling. Uh, products and so that uh needs to be funded uh through the state. Um, the other is the the bonding is gonna be the big one for us this year on solid waste. Um, we have, just like the jail, on the solid waste, we have submitted a bonding project, but it's part of the nine county coalition. And it's for our demolition, waste, landfill, hub and spoke amongst those nine counties. And so hopefully that can be supported and included in the bonding bill, wishful thinking here. Um, and so that, I guess, is in in here. It was actually underneath number one, but that is a. It's part of the 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 third bullet on solid waste too. It's not just our our programs. I mean, that's dealing with demolition across the state's gonna be a big issue. And so hopefully the state can help figure that out and maybe put some dollars to those those changes that they're pushing by. Not allowing the the future demolition, not going into a unlined landfill. Um, and then lastly there, the just some. A general solid waste item is to push some on the product stewardship. And we have a lot of. Specialty waste that we gotta deal with from TVs to paint to household hazardous waste and things like that. And if you can push some of that responsibility on the. Producer, the manufacturer who's creating it. Um, to help think about, you know, the, the full lifespan and life of that product and what it's going to be to do. So just a. A little push there on to, to think more on the product stewardship and. And what the manufacturers might help with that.
Questions for Bruce? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you. And uh, with that, that concludes what we have recommended for your consideration on the legislative platform for 2024. As you know, there's a lot of items on this list. Um, it's uh, now time for you to uh, give us some feedback on that list. If you want everything included, that would be fine. Uh, if you want us to limit this list or prioritize the list and shrink it down, add subtract thing. Um, that's the feedback we're hoping for. So I'll just give you a few minutes to opine about that before we move on to other details of the legislative session.
Anyone have comments? I mean, they're all important. And I was going to ask as we started. Uh, has there been some thought as to saying this is the most um. Important to the county, you know, is there one financially that's more important? Is there one that there's, has been a great need and therefore is important? Uh, do we have any evaluation? You know, we could ask individual people and they'll say, yes, health is the most or the roads is the most, you know?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think everyone would say theirs is the most important. We get that through the budget process all the time, right? And you have to make the decision about what's really the most important. So, um. You know, I, I would say that. Uh, the, the second question, which has not necessarily been asked yet, which is do we want to hire a legislative lobbyist? Would sort of maybe address the first question, right? Because if you have somebody down there that's working on your behalf. Taking a list like this and working all the items is, is not an issue for them. So. I, I might suggest, um, if you like all of these items, that you just let us see what we can get done. Um, with the legislative lobbyist and our resources. We certainly have great staff that work these issues through their associations. We, if we had a legislative lobbyist and myself and others working other issues. I mean, when we look back at what we accomplished, although we had a very long list this year, we accomplished nearly half of what was on that list. So. Um, I might suggest considering all of it, if it is something that is important to you and you feel that the county should spend time and resources pursuing.
John?
Tom, can you remind us of what the amount was that we spent for Eric and his group? Last year?
Absolutely, Commissioner. So Flattery and Hood was the lobbyist group that we hired last year. Uh, the contract was thirty thousand dollars for the entire year. So that included everything that we did during the legislative session, writing legislative uh, reports weekly. Uh, giving us briefings on that, attending meetings, certainly writing the legislative. Um, text for us, uh, shepherding it through. Uh, and then certainly, uh, even after the session was over, you might recall Eric came up and he participated in the bonding tours with us, did all of that sort of stuff too. So. Um, I've worked with several lobbyists in the past. I have been very pleased with Eric and his team. And the amount of attention and time that he's put to our, our issues and resources. And, and I think for the price that they charge. Quite reasonable. So I would personally, as the administrator, recommend you consider favorably hiring back.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think, and I know we're not voting on it at a work session, but I, I, I agree. And I know that. Joe and I went down and worked with Eric and given the fact that he was so successful. Uh, I think it would be smart for us, and I don't know if you're going to need something out of, at a. From a board resolution, maybe. Um, but I, but I think. Maybe not every year that we're going to hire, but with this bonding. With the jail situation that we have and, and the hub has spoken of, um. Solid waste and, and there's, and with all these issues, it just seems to me, we saved a bunch of money because we didn't hire a firm to help us. With the uh, vote, so we saved about twenty thousand dollars there. Um, and maybe we were smart doing that. But uh, I, it just seems like that would be money well spent again for 2024.
Mr. Chair, would, would it be appropriate for us to put it as item 12B to formally approve of? Of you were, um, putting a contract together with the lobby firm or what do we need?
I think that, to me, it makes sense that we do that. Then, then you know, again, what the directive is and uh. Lobbyists are also busy. Uh. Obligations wise, so I think better sooner than later.
So, Mr. Chair, I have had conversations with Mr. Simonson and uh. Uh, he knows that you are debating this tonight. And uh, my thought was if you were to favorably consider this, which it sounds like the direction of the board. I, I'll get with him tomorrow and tell him to put a contract together. And then I'll bring that contract to you for formal approval at a future board meeting. Uh, because our next board meeting is a week away. And I have to have all those documents by tomorrow. I, I probably won't get it on this next week's, but I'll plan for it, uh, for an approval and a review on the January 2nd meeting, if that's okay.
So you just needed our consensus tonight, not necessarily formal approval?
That's correct.
We don't get to put it degenerating?
No, sir. Okay. No, no, you're fine. I, I have my direction and I'll, I'll put a contract together and then you'll have a formal approval at a later time than that.
Any other input dealing with the uh, information at hand? Okay. Uh, Tom, any other things for your administrative report?
Um, I'll have to go get that off the other desk, but uh, before, if you don't mind, uh, Mr. Chair, so, um. It sounds like, because I want to bring this legislative platform back for a formal approval. It's not on your tonight's um, agenda for consideration. Because we wanted to give you some time and some space to kind of review it and give us an opportunity to make any adjustments that you might have. Uh, anticipating that maybe there were going to be a few. If the, if I under, to understand then that the board is fine with the legislative platform as written. And then I'll just bring it as a separate agenda item for the regular session at the next meeting, December 19th, where you can take a formal action on it.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Very good. Let me grab my administrative.
And if we would rather wait on that until a regular session, we can too, but can you, I don't know how long.
Yeah, we've got plenty of time with that.
Take a break.
All right, take a break and we'll come back in five. With the Pledge of Allegion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see any citizens uh, to address the, the board. So I'll ask for the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair. I move that we approve the agenda as written with the following additions. Item 12A. The United States Postal Service Resolution of Support. And item 12B, the administrators' update.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye, our discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
There's second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. All right, um. Commissioners Committee Assignment Review.
Mr. Chair. Just have a couple of questions. Um. Can find my. I wrote it. Your chair?
Yes. We'll, we'll go with. Go ahead.
Okay. Now, Bemidji Leads, just a note, isn't really a thing anymore. That's dissolved. So that could probably just come right off the list. Um. Has since kind of evolved into. Greater Bemidji and. And whatnot, but Bemidji Leads really isn't a thing anymore. So that can probably just come right off the list. Um, also a name update for the Beltrami HRA. Um, Sandy Henham is the contact for that now. Um, just a couple of technical. Updates. And then I did have some questions too. Um. About a couple of. When things meet, um. The County Extension Committee, I'm just curious what day and time that meets.
Usually on a Monday morning at like nine.
Nine thirty.
Nine or nine thirty. Um, is that? Every other month?
I think it's quarterly.
Quarterly, yeah, Monday mornings.
Okay. Um, and then uh, the Land of the Dancing Sky Board on Aging. Uh, when, when and where do they meet?
They meet usually in more, uh, well, they move it around. Sometimes it's in Moorhead, sometimes it's in Warren, sometimes it's in Menoma, and they do move that around. I have not been able to go. I zoom in on that one because it's right after the, the county extension one. And so I've been attending that one in person and then zooming to that. Although I think. If you'd like to be on the Extension Committee. Um, or, or if you'd like to be on Dancing Sky, either one, I, I'm, I, I think, I really think that we need, and I was talking to Anne about this. Think we need to have an in-person presence at the Dancing Sky. So I think it's really important on the next one coming up. That I, that I or someone goes in person instead of zooming in.
What time is that at?
Uh, it's usually on a Monday at. I want to say eleven o'clock. Because I was able to zoom in as soon as the extension was over, then I'd run into the commissioner room and zoom in.
Okay.
Um, so it's usually at love and I think if I'm not mistaken, and that's usually quarterly.
Yeah.
Okay, so there, and that was one of the ones I had a question about is if, I, I think it's, some of these are really important that we attend in person. Um. So I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm open on that, Joe, if you've got any suggestions.
Um. Middle of the day is pretty tough for me. I, I have to zoom into a couple of things already. Um. And I don't know.
When does the county extension?
That's nine thirty usually.
Okay. And I don't know how important it is that we have two commissioners on that. I, I don't know what the. Too bad Tony's not still here to ask him. But I do think the next time the Dancing Sky comes up, if it's, if it competes with the extension, I am going to go to Dancing Sky just because we need to have that presence.
Um, and the Behavioral Health or Community Collaborative, that uh, is uh. The even months. And it's at eight o'clock in the morning.
Who's on the Mental Health Advisory Committee? Is that Tim or John or?
No, that's, that's on mine. And that was one, the Mental Health Advisory Committee, I was told, has actually got merged with. Something else. And so that, that's not something I've been invited to.
That's been, it's been merged and changed into the Behavioral Health Community.
Right. And so that's, that one that's on yours, right?
Right.
So that's actually off of mine, the Mental Health Advisory Committee.
And that's the one that's.
Okay.
Eight o'clock.
My only other question is, uh. Fair Board, are you still serving on that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um.
And do you see, and do you see something different than what we were stating or not?
Okay. Good. I'm sorry.
I'm just curious what time and what day the Fair Board needs.
The Fair Board, it's actually, let's see. Um, it's actually on here. It's the third Monday of the month at seven PM.
Okay.
Um, and then. Mr. Chair, I, I'm listed as a Paul Bunyan Transit Joint Powers Board, but I also know that. Greg is also, but are we supposed to have two commissioners there? I, I've never been to one. I.
We used to have two.
Yeah, we used to have two and it used to be Jim and I and, and that, but it was, um.
I've never been invited, so I don't know when it is.
Yeah, I didn't think that it was necessary for us to have two there and, and that's what we, um, Jim was the one that had done it. You know, I find out you haven't been going, I haven't been going because he was the one that was complaining.
So I, and, and I, I don't have a opinion one way or the other, right? If I should go, I'll go, but.
What day and time do they meet?
But they, I don't know, they need to, I need to send me something.
It was during the day, it was only quarterly, but it wa, it was during the day, um, in the morning at some point.
What I'm hearing though is sometimes we have two. For the smaller, what we consider smaller committees. And do we really need to? And is there a statute that says that we have to if it's a certain organization?
It's a joint power, so it's probably specified in the joint powers agreement, I'm guessing.
I, I'm thinking it probably actually should be because I think it's two city council members and two. It's kind of like the airport authority that we're on where it's two and two, and then the executive director, whatever. Um, so we probably should have.
Directive on that?
Well, I'm glad you asked, uh, Mr. Chairman. So there, there are, what, what we would probably want to do, to be honest with you, this list is kind of crazy. So it's all over the place. We don't have a lot of great information about how the committees have changed and moved and all this stuff. And certainly bylaw review would be helpful. I, I would maybe ask for the commissioner's assistance and, and when you go to your meetings to kind of just. And certainly bylaw review would be helpful, I, I would maybe ask for the Commissioner's assistance, and, and when you go to your meetings to kinda just ask about the membership. Cause it's, it's really difficult for us to, to kinda track that. I will tell you that there are some, um, of the meetings that you go to that you don't really need to go to, they don't need a Commissioner. Um, Commissioners just kinda gone to them. Uh, you could send a staff person in your, in your stay. Alternatively, there's, uh, some. Uh, meetings or some of these, um, groups that only one Commissioner's needed, but we have sent two. Um, Shaq is a great example, uh, so, uh, we have two Commissioners at Shaq, we really only need one. Uh, we want two people, so we could have, for example, um, our Public Health Director attend the Shaq meeting along with a Commissioner, and so that's another way to maybe lighten the load for Commissioners. So, um, it's sort of up to you, you know, there, there are some opportunities here for you to. Um, minimize the amount of, of, um, Commissioner involvement in these, uh, by sending staff instead, or there might be just some. Of these organizations that maybe don't need a Commissioner at all, but it's just been a nice to have type of thing, so. I think that's kind of part of the discussion, we may not be. Um, timely to have today, I mean, it's timely, but it may not, we may not have time for that kind of a conversation today, but. You know, certainly. That's something to consider when we talk about how much has been added to your plate, I mean, you guys have a lot of assignments, and so. If there are ways to reduce or condense those assignments, you know, maybe we should be looking into that.
And, and I, just from past experience, I know, taking Shaq as an example. And is, our, our Amy has been. Taking the lead actually with that now, uh, Tim is, is the, uh, person assigned, and I'm the alternate. But back, uh, a few years. I was going, but we didn't have our, our health person, uh, public health person as active. And I really found it important to have that boots on the ground, people that deal with us every day. Really active, and Amy has done a, a great job with that. So, thank you, Amy.
Uh, Joe, the, I was looking at the Transit Board, and that's not till four o'clock in the afternoon, is that something that you're interested in, I, cause I, I, I don't, if you want that, I. What day of the week? Well, it says the second Wednesday of the month, quarterly, so like four times a year maybe? Yeah, but I'm, I'm happy to do it, but I, I, you know, if it's something that you, it's easier for you to attend than some other meeting, that's.
How about if we do this, let's. You know, we. We're gonna have to narrow this down somewhere, and, and I like Tom's suggestion that we. Check with. Our group and find out what, what we need. But I know with the Northwest Juvenile Training Center. Each of the counties have two people that show up. Most of the time. And that's the joint powers as well, yep.
So, and that's you and Tim, yeah.
So, the, the last thing I had was, um. I know that Craig has asked me in the past, and he asked me again for this week. To fill in on the Northwest Regional Radio Board. Um, and I'm actually listed on their list as the alternate, and not Joe, but it's on Joe's list as the alternate, so. And that's a, like, ten o'clock in the morning, so that's really not good for Joe, but, so I think that you should probably maybe move that one over to my list.
And I was wondering if we could move the, and have me be the alternate, because that one almost, a, a lot of the time, and, and that's one of the reasons why I asked you the last time and this time, because it conflicts directly with exactly the same. Time as the Polk County Incinerator Board. It's a, and, and I have to be there in Boston, in face to face, and they're at the same time, so I can't like zoom right afterwards to get to the other one. And so, um, you know, the, the Polk County Incinerator meets quarterly, sometimes more than quarterly, and this one meets every other month, so they land at least two or three times out of the year. I end up having two meetings at the same time and can't be in both places.
Yeah, the problem I have is that every time that that has come up, it's the same time that we have the jail design committee meeting, and that's, and I, and it. From what I can tell, the design committee meeting isn't ending anytime soon for the work we have for the jail, so I, it would be, I couldn't be here and then get to Thief River.
Right, you would have to attend it via Zoom like you have in the past, you know, I can't attend the Polk County one via Zoom.
I can, I, I mean, I, I, that's fine, but I would have to be by Zoom, I, Chris is always there, so, you know, having. Our boots on the ground there in person is great.
Yeah, and we need that.
Yeah. So, and if you wanna leave it the way it is and have you be the alternate, and you can sub when I have a, there are conflicts.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But you could move it from Joe's over to mine, maybe.
Yeah, that would probably be good.
Well, I, I don't even think that was listed as one of mine.
The Northwest Radio Board?
Yeah.
Well, it's on the sheet that was here, that's why I questioned it, it was.
Yeah, it's, it's the, the third from the bottom as the alternate, yeah.
As an alternate.
Yeah, yeah, and we're just saying to move him as the alternate instead of you.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. I think I'm an outlier here, cause a lot of my stuff. I know that, uh, in their bylaws, they want a county commissioner on here. BiCap. Pope House. Uh, K R L S.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question of, of a county commissioner, I think it's, do we need two?
Oh, yeah, well, the, while Tom was talking about having a staff instead of elected official, and what, and what the bylaws say for each group, and. I, I just wanna speak to the fact that I think it is important to have an elected official, a local elected official that represents the public at. A lot of these things, I think. There's a lot to be said about that. Um, but I also see how. You know. Staff are doing the work every day, and it's super helpful for them to be plugged in constantly too, so. I kinda see both sides on that one.
Well, a lot of the ones I'm involved with, Joe, are, they're, you know, it, it has to be an elected official, because it's a joint powers type situation, and, you know, we. Uh, we need to have representation, cause some of them, well, like the Radio Board, um, they've had issues in the past where they actually had to come up with a policy. To, to kinda prod people to either show up or get somebody else to show up, because they were not meeting quorum. And so, you know, that, that becomes an issue, and. That's the way a lot of mine are, where it, it's a bill where it's not a matter of, you know, just showing up, if, if they don't have a quorum, if we don't have people throw up.
Right, Diane? On, on mine, the, uh, Behavioral Health Committee. It's an even month. Third, second Thursday at eight o'clock. Yes. Anyone else have?
The, uh, name change on Headwaters Regional Development is no longer Tim Flathers, it's Naomi Carlson.
We've got that, good.
John, did you say the, uh, Joint Powers Board? Paul Bunyan Transit conflicts with something that you're?
No, I, I don't think so, I, you know, so I mean, if I, I'm, I'm happy to do it, I just, I didn't know if you wanted to, or.
I mean, I'm interested, but I, I usually at work till five o'clock on Wednesday, so.
Okay, no, I, that's fine, can you make sure that they add me to the?
I'll have to go to it, cause I thought you were going to.
Well, Diane, can you communicate with Leslie and just say, you know, get us the information when they're gonna meet and?
Uh, the Public and Transit Joint Powers Board, we can turn numbers on here, we can just give her a call.
And you know what, I think if we just kinda go through our own again, and then meet separately with Diane and make sure that we've got changes made, so.
Yeah.
We're not just hit and miss. Um, other thoughts?
Glad we weren't there?
Yes, thank you, Mister.
Uh, Tom has other thoughts here.
Well, yeah, thanks Mister Chair, we, we just wanna wrap this up, so everybody knows what the expectation is at the start of the calendar year, so, of course, we only have one meeting left, so. Um, times of the essence, if you don't mind, I mean, we, we could certainly make adjustments in January as well, but, um, probably best to have it sooner than later, so. I, I think we have all the adjustments you have here, we'll make those and try to put it on for the December nineteenth approval. Uh, if that sounds okay, if there's more adjustments, we can certainly make them, and that has happened throughout the year too, some of you have just come and. Of course traded some different things, and that's just fine, so, um.
So do you?
We'll just email this, what we have as far as changes back to you tomorrow.
And then we'll, we'll move this topic to the next board meeting?
That's right, yeah, yeah, if, if you prefer, or if you wanna just say, hey, with all the changes that we have captured, you wanna approve it now, you can certainly do that too.
I think it'd be easier to print it back out, and then we just maybe look at it again next time, while we get a. Cause I like to look at my stuff ahead of time and.
Yeah, well, and then Tim isn't here either, so he has some issue with something, that would be better for him to.
And he could let Diane know.
He could let Diane know in the meantime, maybe, and so that'd be fair to him.
So is, is it on the agenda?
It was on the agenda, it was number eight, but. We're gonna both punt that one to the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Uh, Mister Chair, I move that we.
If we just don't have to say anything. Do we have to? I don't think there's been a motion, we just don't say anything.
Regarding the Committee Assignments?
Right.
We're just moving that to the next meeting.
Yeah, right, I didn't know if we had, if that has to actually be a.
No.
I don't think so.
What's the, what's the word I'm looking?
Move people, a motion?
Motion.
No, to, uh.
Reconvene. Or to move it to the next.
The table, that's, that's what I'm wanting to do, do we have to motion to table, is that we have to do?
Tom says no.
No.
No, you don't need to do that, you, you've actually had the discussion on a regular agenda, it doesn't require an action. Um, you can just simply, as you have direct staff, to put it back on the agenda for next time.
Perfect, okay.
Very good. Alright, that. Go to the next item.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
In looking over. The Commissioner's salary and per diems that were printed in our. Board packet. Um, I understand that the history. Of Commissioner's salaries has been tied to. The rate of increase of employees at the, at the county, and I think that seems fair. Um, but I did have some questions on the per diems. And the per diem policies, and so what I'd like to recommend is, and in fact, I, I'd like to move. That we table item nine. Approval of salary and per diem rates. So that we could direct staff to split those two into two different resolutions. One being the salary and another one being the per diem rates. Um, and I think that. That's my motion to table that until next week.
And, uh, do we have, um. Do we have a policy on this?
Uh, no, Mister Chair, we have followed kind of a tradition here, where salary and per diems, because they're both monetary topics for the board. Have been just included together. Uh, you can certainly separate them and have two separate resolutions and deal with the items separately, if you choose.
So we could deal with them separately tonight, even though they're on one item tonight?
You could accept that our resolution is tied, both of them together, so, it'd be cleaner if we had a separate resolution for each item.
So I'll second that resolution, or that, uh, motion then, to, uh, to table it, or to let it go in. Um, until next week to have them separated.
Okay, um. Is there a discussion? Wonder if we shouldn't, um. Do we have to look in and get more information on either one of those?
I think we have to table this first.
Okay. Then let's do that. Any question, any problem with that?
Your motion is to.
To table, to table.
Table it to the next meeting, with, with the instruction of separating the two items into two different resolutions.
Yep.
And nothing in addition to that, or, okay.
Okay, and with that motion and second. Any discussion?
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I, I apologize, but as a point of order, once a, once an item has been tabled and receives a second, it is not eligible for discussion.
Oh, good, thank you, appreciate it. Good thing we have a partner material.
Yeah, okay.
Alright. Then we move on.
Well, we gotta vote.
Yes, you can vote, you just can't discuss.
Just can't discuss it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. It passed, three to one.
Mister Chair. Um, I don't think this is a discussion of. The items that were tabled. Uh, just bringing up, there was a question that you raised and Commissioner Gosbig raised regarding. Looking into the per diem situation, and I don't know, and you'll have to let me know if this is. Not allowed at this time, but I'd like to recommend that we have a committee. To review the per diem policy and, and actually tighten that up, I think right now our per diem policy is a little loosey goosey. And it just seems like if we had a committee of probably the outgoing chair. The incoming chair. The, uh, uh, elected auditor treasurer, and probably. The health and hu, or the, uh, human resource director. That we could actually come up with a firm policy that we can all agree on, and, and make sure that there, that not, that it's not just some tradition that we follow, that's a real policy. Uh, and I don't know if that's. Uh, I'd like to move that we do that, I don't know if that's allowable or not. It's a separate item, I guess, I. It's not approving a resolution.
No, um. Mister Chair and Commissioner, uh, Carlson, you're on the same topic, um, you've tabled the action on that topic. And you're recommending, it sounds to me like a committee to gather information to inform the topic for future consideration, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, um, I think you probably wanna make that motion and have it seconded and then vote on it, and see where the board wants to go, and. In convening, sounds like the committee that you're discussing.
Okay, so if, as long as that's allowable, I move that we create a committee. Consisting of the outgoing board chair, the incoming board chair. The elected auditor treasurer and the human resources director to review. The past. Uh, I guess it wasn't a policy, but, but the past, uh, history of how they, how we paid per diems. Uh, and actually come up with a firm hard policy that's recognizable, uh, and easy to follow.
I'll second that.
Alright, discussion? Uh, just, oh, go ahead.
Maybe more, more of a point of information, uh, since we. Tabled this topic. I'm wondering if the motion is. Out of order. Since we're, we're kinda on to the next agenda item at this point.
Again, we. Turn to Tom for his expertise on that.
That he pretty much just told us that it was okay to do it, that it wasn't out of order.
So, um.
Maybe the Chair has to just rule and we go from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, another way that you could do it, if we, if we want to, if, if we're concerned about that, is you could bring it up as a future agenda item. Or, and, and discuss it.
Well, there's already a motion and a second, so we're, we're at the discussion stage.
Yeah, I, I don't. Since you're not discussing the approval. Of, or of the per diem, and you're not discussing the resolution itself, and you're not discussing the details of that, you're simply. Trying to recommend the development of a committee to. Look into that, which would inform your decision making at the next meeting.
Right.
I, I still don't see why that's not, um, allowable, maybe I'll lean over to the county attorney and see. If there's an opinion that he has, which may be in alignment or differ than mine, so that you get essentially the full facts.
I, I would agree with Tom's earlier assessment that, um. A, a tabled issue gets tabled, in a tabled indefinitely, it doesn't have to be brought up. Until the, you know, I think you instructed me to bring it up next meeting, but, uh, you can table something indefinitely, a, a, a new. A new topic on the agenda, you know, or, I mean, you, you made a motion which was seconded. Now, um, there is the ability to discuss that, yes, you can make a point of order, a point of information, it's ultimately the Chair's decision. Uh, as long as he's within the rules, which I believe he's solidly in, to continue the discussion on the topic, and then eventually, uh, call for a vote.
Okay. Alright, with, motion's been made and seconded that we, uh, have a committee. Uh, to look at the, uh, per diem rates. And come up with, uh, uh, policy, uh, since we don't have one, obviously. And, um. And. I, I, I believe we, we can do that, keeping in mind that it comes back to the Commissioners, and the Commissioners still vote. And give their input, no matter, because this is, if we're working toward a policy, that's, that's where we all have to have the right to discuss it. So. With that. All in favor? Of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it, it, uh, passed three to one. Alright, we can move on to the. Next item of business, which is approval of future projects on, uh, cash twenty. Kasah twenty.
Sorry, I was too. I was paying too much attention to what you were doing to.
Yeah.
Get my sheet up there. Uh, Kasah twenty project, we have a project on twenty one, it is right now in the, uh. Transportation Improvement Plan for twenty five. Um, this is the project that would be on the north side of Lake Bemidji from twenty one to the entrance to the state. Um, this is the project that would be on the north side of Lake Bemidji from twenty one to the entrance to the state park. Um, it's been in the five-year plan. It is a reconstruction project. Uh, that we've been uh, starting to develop and its topic has been. Uh, brought up to the county board a few times by myself and also some residents up there in that area. We have a little history on the project. Again, this project kind of balloons when you start thinking about it and start working on it. Um, you know, what's it gonna entail? Uh, cause you get into the city, or sorry, um, public water, public sewer. Uh, who's gonna have jurisdiction over that city township? Um, and so we, uh, yeah, we've been talking about this project for a while. Uh, what the project itself would look like, the the road section, uh, we put together a design review committee. Uh, that we included some local residents, but also some users, uh, someone from the bicycling bicycling community. Um, the DNR, um, city township. I mean, we've had some, we had some people on there to help provide input. The intent was is. All right, what is that road gonna look like? Um, really, there was two questions of do you want a wider road for people to walk and bike on or uh, an off-road trail? Um, that was the preferred section. But during those discussions, the local residents did point out some concerns that they had. Uh, being speed, the amount of traffic, the noise, the traffic, the truck traffic. Um, so they had some concerns with the project. Um, they had. Roughly a year, year and a half ago, they had come with petition to the township. Uh, the county, we got a copy of it. I came in front of the county board and very similar to this and kind of got some direction. How do you want to proceed? Uh, and at that time, the consensus was to continue with the project as proposed. Now, this year, where again, we're kind of, the project's getting. Uh, developed, uh, and there's been more discussions with the local residents out there. Um, we, John and I attended a meeting out there, tried to. Explain some information on the project, answer questions. Uh, but those individuals have come to a few county board meetings and expressed their concerns. At the open mic at the beginning of the meeting. And uh, and also turned in a petition to to do some. Further consideration on that project. And so I guess what I'm here is to get input from the board on how you would like to proceed. Uh, with that, uh, called a a situation with the project. Do we? Want to proceed as is? Do we wanna kind of put a. Hold on the project, get some public um, input or provide some information out there? Or just completely kill the project? Those are really kind of the three options. Um, killing the project to do nothing, we would do some type of surfacing project out there to just kind of extend it and kick. Kick the can down the road. But that's really kind of the three options that uh, I see with the project. Stop or just pause or continue as is. Uh, my recommendation, as was roughly a year ago, is to continue with the project. Um, the, I fully understand the concerns of the locals out there. It is a highly traveled route. Um, and right now, again, there's concerns with the being a narrow road. Uh, there is the safety concerns with the peds, pedestrians and bicyclists and, I mean, just going out to your mailbox with that high. Um, high amount of traffic and narrow road. Um, the concerns that they brought up, again, are are valid. Um, but their solutions are what they were, a couple of the options they put out there of uh, putting the traffic somewhere else. Um, you know, just quickly looking at those options that I um, prepared for you, looking a little more detail. It just really isn't a good alternative, in my opinion, to send that traffic somewhere else. And it is at a higher cost and you're putting that headache on someone else. Those same cars are gonna go by someone else's house. And the one example goes through a house, you know, they're they're just not a a good, easy alternative to to send that traffic somewhere else. Um, and so just to, in my opinion, as you continue dealing with it as best as you can where it's at. Um, and uh, I guess kind of move forward with the project is my. Recommendation.
John? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. My preference would be option two at this time, given especially given the fact that Northern Township. Received the letter that they did from the state. Um, their project is definitely going to be set back probably at least a year, I'm guessing be- because of that. Um, that would give us uh, an another. Season for residents to have their input, but I also think that we have really only heard from the residents. That live right in that um, immediate area on the lake. We haven't heard from any of Commissioner Gosvig's. Uh, residents yet, um, a- and I think it's probably only fair. For all of us as commissioners to hear all sides of the story. Um, I I I think that um. Yeah, I I I, and I know I know we don't want to kick the can down the road. And I appreciate the work you're doing on this, Bruce, but it just seems like if we could hold this off. For maybe six months and uh, and allow all the residents that either live there or travel through there to give everyone a chance. To have their say about that, that might be, it might be important.
Mr. Chair. Are you asking for a public hearing on that then? Is that what you're saying?
Boy, I don't know if it have to be that. I guess I leave that up to. Maybe, maybe.
My my solution is to to just go with the the engineer's recommendation of moving forward this project, um, and. But if it's possible to keep in communication with Northern Township so that we um, don't end up, you know. Doing something and then having to rip the road up, uh, you know, because of a sewer and water project going later. But I think we definitely want to partner with Northern Township on it, but I do want to see the, I don't, I'm not in favor of rerouting it to. I would just, you know, moving the problem to somebody else. I just, I don't think that's a. A good solution, so, and I and I definitely don't think that we should just do nothing and and just. Resurface it. That doesn't help Northern Township or or the lake or anybody. And so I'm, I think that we need to keep. Moving forward with the project, but if we can, you know, slow roll it, so to speak, to till we know that we're gonna be able to do it in conjunction with Northern Township, that's what I'd like to see.
Anyone else? Bill?
Um, Mr. Chair, I guess, uh. I'm with Commissioner Carlson at this point, uh. You know, it. It's winter. Um, I think six months is a acceptable uh, timeframe to pause the development and just kind of. Um, review alternatives. Um, I I'm hearing what the public is saying on on this uh, project, loud and clear as well. And so, um. That's kind of where I'm at too.
Okay, and I, as I looked at this, we've uh, we've gave, we've given the go-ahead before. And I'm not sure why we've put the brakes on now, other than uh, with. With the development for Northern Township.
What what would be the ramifications of Ironman if I, would there really be any brakes to be put on at this point? Or what what are you doing? Um, is there funding that you're applying for? Is there just engineering work or what what would the? The the second option that Commissioner Carlson has mentioned, what would that, how would what would that, how would that affect the project?
Yeah, so our. This will be a complicated project, even without the water and sewer in it. Um, an urban project, stormwater, you know, stormwater is a brand new. Issue out there that we're gonna deal with, where it's gonna go, how it's gonna be treated in that, um, the right-of-way corridor. Um, we, we we've got the corridor we need, however, to have all of the clear title and everything, you know, we've got some work to do on the right-of-way side of it also. Um, we are, have a consultant doing the design work right now, and so they are designing the road and will. Continue, they've, we had a meeting last week with preliminary design or draft design the road already. Um, so, you know, we would be putting those, that on pause or that on hold. Um, and then, yes, the the funding, I'm, I just uh, in the last month, I've submitted for a state grant and for a federal grant. To try to help pay for this project. Um, so, those are. You know, there's another one coming up that's due the end of February that I would be applying for a federal grant. So there are those option, or sorry, opportunities out there that we would not, you know, we would just kind of drop. Um, and then, yeah, put on hold and and try to get some input, working with the township. Um, they, we've, I've had that conversation with them. They're applying for funding, we're applying for funding. And so they know that, you know, at some point there, it's gonna be a do or die if, you know, if we get a two million dollar uh, grant. You know, it's gonna have a a sunset time period, and so they're gonna have to figure out what they're gonna do by that time period, but. For the, right now, we're, again, no one's got any funding. For it, and so we're both trying to work towards that finished project. Um, so delaying. If we don't, again, don't have that federal grant with the sunset time period yet, you know, we're delaying the project to wait for the township to figure out that a water and sewer is. Definitely within the realm, you know, to kick it back a year in the the five-year plan. Um, but, again, we're, we wanna try to get that federal funding, the state funding to help pay for this this project and. And so I guess that's kind of the, the things that are, would be detrimental to putting it on hold.
Hey, uh, John?
Um, has it, were were there public hearings, specific public hearings on this prior to when I, so I don't remember that we had one. We had people come and speak, but we never. Was there a public hearing on this project in the past, prior to us being on the board?
No, we have rarely had public hearings on our projects. We will take. Um, we'll have some informational meetings, sometimes on a more complicated project. Um. When we're trying to provide them information on what's coming. Um, we have had input meetings. The last one we did, and I wanna almost say it's the only one we've done. Is the roundabout that we built this summer on Irvin. You know, we took some input on that one. Roundabout or uh, or signalized intersection. It just not, has not been a. Something that we have done. Um, it has come up over here recently, now with the uh, the board. Uh, suggesting that on some of these projects, we have a public informational meeting when we might have something. But uh, this one, uh, again, we've been working on this project for, for many years or talking about it. It's been in the five-year plan, but. We, to get that public input is why we put that design review committee together. You know, get those locals, get the users to get that input that way, I guess is the the intent that we have there.
Well, I think given, given what I. The responses I've had and the questions I've had from the my constituents that live there, I've. I I have to ask for a public hearing. I maybe it's shot down, I don't know, but I'm gonna have to ask for that. I I think that they. That they're asking me to do that and and whether that's in March or it's in April, maybe it doesn't have to be any later than March or April. But I'd like to request that. I, it's up to you, you guys can vote it down if you want, but I'd like to request that we have a public hearing on that.
I'm not opposed to having a public hearing on it, and I would obviously want to get a lot of my constituents. Involved at that to help, you know, help counteract some of the stuff that might be from your constituents, but. But uh, we, you know, so it might be a oysters public hearing, but I'd, I would just as soon see us not delay. Him keeping, applying for grants and keeping the project moving forward. Ultimately, we we've given him, I think, probably a couple of times over now, we've given him the. The the go-ahead that we want to move forward with this project, and so now to put the brakes on. And and potentially miss out on getting funding and other stuff. I don't, I don't see that as being, as it being counterproductive.
And and basically, that's what it would bother me also. We've, we've given our go-ahead. And we've had opportunities to hear from some of those folks that came and we gave them their time to speak to the issue. Uh, I'm I'm not so sure that uh, the other group that is unaware of what might happen if we change it. Wouldn't also fill the other half of the room.
Absolutely.
So, I I don't know if it's going down a slippery slope when we've got so many roads to build or not to. If you had a public hearing here, why wouldn't you have one over here?
Right.
So, I guess that's where I. Think we just move ahead, but it's up to you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could, I think this is kind of a unique project. Um, given the public interest and the geography and and existing road structures, you know. And and we're not gonna find out unless we try. Um, I would be supportive of a public hearing as well.
Okay, is there, was there, you didn't make.
Nobody had a motion. I don't think on anything, um.
Well, that that's case, I move that we hold off until we can have a public hearing on this.
What define hold off? Is the, is he still gonna be able to continue? Going for your grants and think and continue with the design of the project? Are you, are you saying that we gotta put a total stop on all?
I I tell you what, let's get a second to that first and then let's discuss it.
Second.
Okay, so you seconded it.
Okay.
So now, what does hold off mean?
Uh, until we can put together a public hearing, and I don't know what that takes, whatever that takes, you know, maybe that takes a a month, two months. Enough, eh, enough to give people time to get the information out that there's gonna be a public hearing. Um.
So, so does that mean he can't apply for the grants in February?
Well, okay, no, why, 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 why wouldn't he apply for the grants?
That's, well, if you're saying hold off, what is that? That's why I said define hold off. Is he gonna totally stop all work on the project, including applying for grants and what?
Well, look at how it's spelled out in the, in the recommendation for number two here.
By can the, the applying for the grants, you know, I'm saying, here's the road segment, this is what's gonna be done. If in the end, we're taking input and it's gonna be rerouted somewhere else. You know, that that that's not what I'm applying for, that's, you know, stuff that's different than what.
Uh, yeah.
I would have in my application, and so, then it wouldn't be, I guess, eligible, and so I would not be able to. Apply for a grant if, you know, it was gonna be rerouted someday.
It says, pause the development of the reconstruction project. Um. Define development of the reconstruction project. It's winter, there's no work being done on the road right now. So we're pausing it already.
He's doing a lot of work, but just, you know.
The project, project development is.
Okay, well, then, then we can add. But still, the uh. The research, the the the. Uh, grant writing or grant applications, a lot of the stuff behind the scenes, the designs. I I don't see why a lot of the stuff uh, that you do in the off-construction season can still take place. Maybe you hold off. For a couple of months on some stuff, but. You know. I don't, I don't think we're killing the project indefinitely by having a public hearing in a few months.
If I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Again, a concern, so if we, behind the scenes, we're still designing the road in the current location. As originally planned. Now we're gonna go to the public and say, would you give us information, or provide input on should the project continue or not? When we're actually continuing it, then we're really not taking their input. And by chance, if you did take their input and rerouted it, but then now you've, you've wasted the, the dollars we spent on that design, so. If it's, if it's a pause and hold, I guess the engineering and the developments and all that's gonna, gonna be paused. Until we have that public hearing, so we do take that public's input. And then the board can give direction at that time, so I, a pause is a, is a pause on on our end. I mean, we're gonna. We're gonna take the time instead to develop these alternatives, so they're presentable to the public. Um, plan that public meeting, when, where, how, how we're gonna take the input. Is there gonna be whoever screams the loudest in the meeting, or is there gonna be some kind of input? Online where you can submit a vote, you know, there, that, that's, I guess, what we would end up doing if.
Uh, Tom?
Project's pause.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm kind of hearing the conversation with the board and and listening to the advice of our, our county engineer. I might make a suggestion. Um. It sounded to me, Bruce, that you needed to have some definitive direction before you can apply for the next grant. I mean, the grants that you've already applied for, those have been submitted under the construction, um. Arrangement that you've kind of designed already and all that stuff, so that that work is done and paid for, so that's kind of a water under the bridge, I think. But the grant that you're gonna apply for is due in February, correct? So, what if we had a public hearing in January? That allowed for Commissioner Carlson's constituents and Commissioner Gosvig's constituents and everybody's constituents to say their piece or whatever. And uh, and we had it, you know, maybe at the second meeting in January, which would be the sixteenth. Uh, and then that evening you gave direction or were able to give direction to. Our county engineer, that would be in sufficient time for him to then make the next grant application. But what, what I'm concerned about is, I mean, these, these are, these can be millions of dollars in grant funding that we could potentially miss out on. Um, I, I think. If we can find a way to incorporate, you know, the, the hearing of the citizens' concerns and at the same time. Not delay the project too much or not waste money on engineering and, uh, and not waste. Um, grant opportunities, then maybe we could find a win-win in all of this, so. Um, being that we are at December twelfth right now, if we were to hold something at the January sixteenth meeting, that would be more than a month away. We only need essentially, um, ten days notice. I, I would suggest at this point, we could put the notice out a few times and we certainly have, you know, more than two weeks, you know, three weeks notice. Um, but I think work at some point on some level. Should probably continue whatever direction the board chooses, um, as the project does remain a high priority for the county.
I would be, uh, favorable to that language in my motion. But he, what he said.
Bruce, that's a dead zone. Anywhere feasible.
We're, we're trying to find the middle ground here, so.
All I was thinking is. I got a lot of work to do before that meeting, in that time period, I mean, noticing, putting out public notices is the very easiest part of it, that's putting, I mean, what's that meeting gonna? Have for, you know, alternatives, are they gonna have this piece of paper, or is there gonna be something up on an ESO, or, you know, that? That's what was going through my head is, all right, I gotta prepare those documents ahead of time, but. I'll, I'll fit within whatever time period, if you're gonna have a meeting, uh, it might be what you got here, you know? Um, and we'll just try to figure out. How we're gonna handle that meeting, so.
Well, we actually have a fifth commissioner that just walked in the door, so.
We're, we're not gonna rehash everything because we're gonna. Okay, Tim.
So, Tim, what, where we're at is, uh, if you reviewed the information on the county. State aid highway number twenty around Burisma Beach Road. Um, the discussion is, um, I made a motion that we. Uh, pause the construction just long enough to have a public hearing. To allow all citizens, whether in the neighborhood or traveling through the neighborhood, to have. Uh, to see the presentation that Bruce had put together on January sixteenth. Um, and then the board will have to give direction. Um, shortly thereafter.
I mean, that, that's the other problem with that is that we won't have another board meeting then, prior to Bruce needing to get that put in, so. Typically, we don't make a decision the same night of a public hearing.
So how was that?
Well, you're not precluded from making a decision the night that you have a public hearing.
The grant. The next grant that I'll be applying for is due February twenty eighth.
Okay, so it's not.
So, so then we could, we could do a formal. Listen to our constituents and make a vote at our first February meeting at. How to proceed. Cause I don't wanna pass up on any money either, I mean, that's, I don't, I don't wanna do that, that's, but I, I owe it to my constituents to let them. Come into a public hearing and.
It's a slippery slope, but when, I don't, I don't recall ever doing a public hearing on a road, do you, Tim? Or, or?
No.
Yeah.
I don't. We haven't, probably been a while.
Yeah.
I don't think we have, we've had, uh, input from folks beforehand.
But just because something hasn't been done before, doesn't mean you can't do it for the first time.
Setting that, setting that precedent and what, what other road projects do we end up with, every single road project?
I don't believe in precedent.
Public hearing.
Let's, uh, let's make a vote.
So, I, I wanna make sure that Tim has enough information so that you can make an informed vote.
So, I understand that there's a motion on a table in the second.
Yeah, second by Joe.
To have a public hearing first part of January?
January sixteen.
January sixteen, okay.
This is a point of, uh, point of order, so you're amending your motion to include the hearing date of January sixteenth, correct? And who was the second?
Joe.
Joe.
Are you agreeing, agreeable to that, okay, so January, we just wanna get that in the notes that it's been set for January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion failed.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider the previous motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Uh, this is my motion, Mister Chair, if I could. Why the heck did we have that half hour discussion if we weren't gonna pass the motion?
Okay.
Yeah, we are.
Called a question.
All in favor, say, oh, wait a minute, we, we got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a, a quick motion that we, uh. Approve of Bruce moving forward with the, the original plan that we've already given him approval on at least once or twice prior board meetings. To keep moving forward with this project.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
On discussion?
Mister Chair, when, when did we, I mean, I know it's been in the five-year plan, but when was there like an actual vote to?
We've given him.
Within the past year.
We haven't had an actual vote, I don't believe, uh, but we've got, we've given him consensus that, to move forward with the project before.
Yeah. All in favor, let's see what, yeah, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, let's see. Where are we, reviewing upcoming, uh, meeting schedule, uh, commissioners.
Meeting schedule.
Set board meeting schedule for twenty twenty.
Yeah. Is there a motion to set the board meeting schedule as presented for twenty twenty four?
I had, I had a change to, Mister Chair.
Okay.
Um. Got it in here somewhere, but. There was, uh, one date that I thought we would probably want to change. Um, yeah, November fifth is on election day, and with it being a presidential election, I thought we would probably wanna change that date.
Well, like we did this year.
Yeah, like we did this year.
Forgive my ignorance, uh, Commissioner Gosvig, is election day the first Tuesday or the second Tuesday, I thought it was?
First Tuesday.
First Tuesday, so it would be the fifth, yeah, so then, we could do what we did this.
This year.
This year.
Move it back to back to back meetings like we're doing now.
Okay.
So, uh, would you make your amendment motion to the, to the twelfth?
Mister Chair, I move that we approve the board meeting schedule for twenty twenty four with the exception of. The November fifth, uh, meeting rescheduled in November twelfth.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion?
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Um, I'm looking at the team management. Schedule portion and I'm wondering if, uh, Commissioner Gosvig. And yourself would be amenable for me to attend the, uh, the summer team management schedule, June, July, August, I'm already. In there for July, but that would just be super helpful with my, uh, teaching schedule to make those. Three meetings work out the best throughout the, uh, year.
So you would just go ahead and.
Uh, swap one with yours.
Well. The, the, the way it's designed, we're, we're all supposed to go to two or three of these, some of us go to two, some of us go to three. Um, I, I, I would be fine with just going to two of them, that's, that's fine too, but.
I'm, I'm, that's fine with me, if you just.
I'm fine with taking the third one, I don't mind, I.
I, I was just saying, you know, if you wanted to swap one for a different timeframe in the year or something.
Oh, sure, okay, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, if you, if you want to do an eighteenth, you know, have me take over February twentieth or December seventeenth for you.
And we kinda do that. Anyway.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I know, but I just thought we'd take care of it now, but, um.
Okay, so the one change has been November fifth to November twelfth, any other changes? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. I think we were, yes, Tom?
Thank you, Mister Chair, uh, by statute, we should be starting the next meeting at six o'clock, so. Uh, would be my recommendation that we just.
Mr. Chair, don't we have a couple-minute leeway, can't we start it at six oh three, is that okay?
I believe statute says six o'clock, uh, so.
Uh, my clock says, uh, five fifty seven.
Excuse me, what are you suggesting, Tom?
I was simply suggesting that you recess this meeting until after the budget hearing meeting at six o'clock and reconvene.
Mister Chair, I move that we recess the meeting until the conclusion of the budget meeting.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, uh. Let's see, be it, do I need to just read this sheet then a bit, or? This for the motion, actually.
Uh, you don't need to necessarily read that sheet, but you should open the public hearing as we, you know, our protocol, open the public hearing, turn over staff presentation and then take public comment.
Okay. Um, I don't have that form in front of me right now, but. We're going to open a public hearing on the, uh, budget agenda approved, uh. To, to get a resolution to the twenty twenty four property tax levy. Uh, before we do that, uh, I would like, uh, Mister Skerrick to kind of clarify. Uh, some of the rules.
Okay, well, I don't really have to clarify the rules, um, but.
Yeah, they can't hear you on the livestream.
Uh, so tonight is a budget hearing, but there is maybe people in the audience, uh, that have questions on their value. Uh, individual value or their individual tax, um, I can take them into the other room and discuss those things with them. Um, and anybody that wants to remain here and, uh, discuss the county budget can so. Uh, do that, so I will, uh, take anybody into the other room, um, that has individual questions on their property.
Okay, and I did have a couple of phone calls, uh, today. And that's exactly what the, uh, people were wondering about was their own property. Uh, is that gonna be up for discussion to the full board? And I did say no, but if they wanted to, they could, certainly could, but. Uh, if they just had a question about their property, that you would take them into another room.
Yeah, if you do get a phone call, just direct it to me and I will talk to them and.
Okay.
Uh, take care of whatever their needs are.
Okay, so anyone here tonight that's just concerned about your own individual, um. Tax increase or, or whatever, uh, go ahead and follow Mister Skerrick.
Well, Mister Chair, um. I also had a, uh. An individual reach out to me, uh, that has property in Redby, that is. About Tram County property and they were wondering about their, uh, tax statement and, and things like that, so. Would I direct this person to Mister Skerrick?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And so tonight isn't the only night that they can.
No, tonight really isn't set up for that, is to set up to look at the, the county's budget and the concerns that they have.
Okay.
So. Okay, uh, are we going to, Tom, are you gonna kind of tee us off here?
Okay, good evening, uh, commissioners. Uh, tonight is the, uh, all-important hearing on the budget and the property tax levy. So, run through a couple of, uh, slides here and get you a background. Uh, and maybe refamiliarize with the, the work that the budget committee did this summer, uh, in preparation for this point in time. Uh, just a couple reminders as we move forward, uh, we do not have to necessarily approve it tonight, although that is what we're hoping. Um, but it does have to, we do have to approve a budget by the end of this month, uh, if we do not. Then we revert back to the previous year's budget as the standing budget, um. There's five million dollars difference between that budget and this budget, so maybe some incentive. Uh, because on this budget, but nevertheless, I'll just jump right in, um, so. Did you? All right, here we go, so the budget process, won't spend a lot of time on this, but essentially. Uh, we've been at the development of the budgets for many, many, many months, uh, dating all the way back really internally, probably to about March. Um, as the budget starts to come into better view. Department heads put together their requests and analyze expenditures and revenues and those sorts of things. We then have, uh, essentially like a kickoff in June. Uh, where a lot of work regarding the development of the preliminary budget and the worksheets and the narratives happens. Eventually we move into July where there's an administrative review and often a reconciliation, uh, process, which can be difficult. Uh, because all that stuff's going on behind the scenes, that's where the county administrator. Is trying to work with various department heads and come up with a balanced budget. Um, it's very difficult, uh, but I can't, uh, thank enough the professionalism and the leadership of our management team. Uh, for working very, very hard, uh, each and every year, really, to, to come to a, a balanced and responsible budget, so. Um, then in August, we take that and we give it to the budget committee, budget committee reviews it. And the budget committee, uh, essentially, uh, makes a recommendation. That recommendation is then presented to you in September is, uh, in the form of a preliminary. Levy and a preliminary budget, uh, and that was done this September. Uh, up on the screen is the budget committee, Commissioners Carlson and Gould, uh, were part of the budget committee this year. I'll, let me try again. Oh, just.
Put a clicker in the budget?
Nah. We do need a new clicker. Need to amend the budget for an extra thirty-five dollars, Tom. All right, so I, I don't know why it's not working, but. It's just, well, I'll just say next slide, uh, so some of the next stuff is animated, so I have to be ready to go, next slide. All right, so economic climate, uh, just as a reminder, you know, so much of our budget is driven by uncontrollables, you know, things that impact us. That we just have no control over, we can't control inflation, we can't control, uh, the massive national wage war that's going on, we can't control a lot of that stuff. Uh, we can't control the electricity prices that increase, we can't control our insurance rates that increase and all of that kind of stuff, so. A lot of our budget is heavily influenced by stuff we just simply can't control, we have to absorb it. Uh, and the only way to do that is either make an adjustment in our revenues to cover those additional costs, or we have to start cutting services. Um, or go without on, on infrastructure or those types of things too. Um, as though inflation did peak, uh, we do know that, um. And, and came back down, we do know that certain sectors of our economy are still quite high, HVAC as an example. Paint for roadway strengthening, um, you know, even, uh, pavement for that matter. Um, infrastructure projects are incredibly costly, we see. Uh, massive increases in that, so just the TI that we're doing, the tenant improvement for the CSC building as an example. Came in almost twice what we had estimated on the engineer's death, so these, these things are very real for us. Workforce, as I mentioned, um, and the recruitment and retention challenges that not just Beltrami County's having, the city's having, the region's having, the nation's having. Uh, create a lot of war, uh, wage pressures, and so that is something that, uh, is, is to be considered and has to be absorbed. Particularly given the fact that we have eight unions with the county and those union contracts also prescribe adjustments to wages that have been set. The county reserves, um, we have. Made some gains, uh, fortunately, uh, through some prudence and, um, belt tightening and whatnot. We've moved up our reserve from about a four-and-a-half month to five-month reserve. And that's within our four-to-six-month target, so that's good, but we do see, uh, that we are building value as we have for some years. Uh, in the tax or, or in the, uh, property valuation area, which is helping. Um, but we do see that, you know, for the most part, building is somewhat static, you know, there are certain things going on in the community occasionally that do help. Um, but between that and mostly growth and value, we are seeing tax capacity and also. Um, the tax rate adjustments, and if you looked at the budget book this year, you'll notice that our tax rate. Is significantly reduced, uh, over last year, which is a good sign. Um, the property tax base, just as a reminder, we, we have a very large area with a third largest geographic county in the state of Minnesota. But only thirty percent of that is actually taxable, all the rest of it's exempt from tax, property taxes, and so that's just something. To consider because we have a lot of needs, but we have a very small area to draw from, uh, in servicing those needs. County jail remains a big, big influence on. County jail remains a big, big influence on our budgets and um, we've had increases in medical food costs, we've had out of county housing increases. For example, this year we've had to increase yet again out of county housing by another six hundred thousand dollars uh, in next year's budget. Uh, the new jail uh, certainly uh, is certainly going to be a strain on the county's budget. Um, and uh, hospital level of care expenses, as was explained to you a little bit earlier in the meeting on the legislative platform, uh, still remains a big concern for us. We've had hundreds of thousands of dollars that go to very, very, very few people, a handful, less than, less than half a dozen. Uh, because of these types of um, requirements on counties. So that's why it's a legis- legislative priority for us again, but until that gets changed, the county's still stuck with that burden. Uh, next we have highway and of course, you know, there's no shortage of maintenance uh, activities and reconstruction projects, the bridges to replace and all of that stuff. And as I mentioned before, that's a sector where costs are growing exponentially and uh, very quickly. And so trying to keep up with what we used to be able to do is becoming more and more difficult for us. Uh, next we have the state legislative funds. There's a lot of great news here and we should be very grateful to the state legislature for the passing of a lot of um, new adjustments to 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 county revenues. Uh, for example, we're going to receive about four million dollars or so in new revenue from the county or from the state of Minnesota. That's super awesome. Unfortunately, the vast majority of that is pass through money, which means actually we're having to give that to either other jurisdictions or it's been earmarked to a specific purpose and can't can't essentially be used for county operations. So, for example, grants that we pass through, housing grants and those types of things, public safety, those are very specific earmarked funds. Um, and a lot of the past two funds have to go back to um, other governmental jurisdictions like townships or the cities uh, and that sort of thing. So really of the four million, only about one and a half million actually was net positive to our budget in regards to helping bring down um, the uh, the operating cost. So here's the budget highlights. Um, you'll see that last year's budget was about almost a hundred million, this year's about a hundred and four million. So there's that four million roughly that we've been kind of talking about. Um, and so um, this does include however, the property tax levy, because I mentioned we had to increase that because we didn't get that full four million, a lot of that was passed through, so we had to make up what didn't get uh, or what was passed through. So um, all the new money from the state is included in here, uh, the property tax levy is included in here. So the twenty twenty four budget has been recommended a hundred and four million, one hundred ninety five thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. Um, next slide please. So uh, we want to talk about what that means in regards to the proposed levy because that budget does include this uh, proposed levy uh, of an increase of six point six five percent or one point nine two million. Um, there's the numbers for you in regards to last year's budget, this year, or excuse me, last year's levy, this year's levy, the percent change uh, and the dollar change there. Um, just keep in mind, as has been the case for many years, uh, the county is resource limited and and so we do the best we can with the resources we have. But I don't want to underestimate um, that the the importance of pointing out that we start with a lot of needs and just because we whittle down the levy as we go through the budget process, doesn't mean that those needs aren't there any longer. Um, we had a seven, with all the needs that were requested by the department heads, we had an anticipated seventeen percent increase in the property tax levy to cover all of those needs. So what we have had to do is find a way to get that down to something more reasonable, and that was the job of the budget committee. And I think they did a great job. The good news is that we were able to offset, you know, that seventeen percent, we were able to bring it down by five percent just because of the state's adjustments. That was really great. That's new state money. And then the rest of the way we had to just do by rolling up our sleeves, uh, either delaying, delaying purchases, delaying projects, uh, making adjustments in operations or or whatnot. And uh, and that leaves us with about a six point six five percent, um, which is what is the recommendation by the budget committee and and the staff for you. Just to let you know kind of where the, where the um, revenue sources come from. Um, only a third of the hundred and four million dollars that we're going to potentially see here with your approval and revenues comes from property taxes. Uh, the county is very good at getting money from other sources. Um, and that's just what this slide sort of says is that we we have a lot of money that comes from intergovernmental or charges for services, special assessments and those sorts of things, and only a third of it comes from property taxes. Uh, when we talk about anticipated expenses, this hasn't shifted very much over this last year or two. Uh, we still see public safety, highway and streets and human services um, as the three dominant, along with uh, general government as a as a close, well, I guess general government and and public safety are pretty close there. So those are the four major cost centers uh, that we have. And of course, it stands to reason we have a lot of staff in each of those areas as well. So we're very staff, um, a very labor uh, intensive operation. And so we have a lot of staff costs associated with that. Uh, speaking of staff, we have some staffing modifications this year. Uh, there's essentially about six point one five FTEs that have been added to the budget, which sounds like a lot and comparatively speaking to previous years is actually a lot. But I just want to point out really quickly that only two of those positions are actually levy funded positions. All the rest of the positions are funded by outside sources or outside money or alternatively are grant funded. So really we have just two positions of the six, that's only a third. Um, and so we're feeling pretty good about that. Uh, and and some of these positions have been requested years and years um, in the making. And there's other positions that were requested that, you know, have been in that same boat as well and uh, just haven't been able to move forward. So, um, just things to think about when we talk about, um, you know, balancing our budget. I want to spend just a minute or two about the American uh, American Rescue Plan Act. This is that one time allotment that came sort of out after COVID to help uh, the country uh, recovery, uh, or recover rather from uh, from the impacts of COVID and the pandemic and that kind of stuff. The county received nine point two one seven million. Uh, and uh, the budget committee has been the the committee responsible for essentially allocating this funding and has chosen to use the budget as the means and way to evaluate requests and make recommendations on the use of that funding. So we had about one point nine million dollars of requests this year uh, that are being recommended. Most of that comes from uh, health and human services in the form of casework software upgrades and the second floor remodel. Uh, the sheriff's office has four hundred thousand as contingency for out of county housing, which is likely to be used. Uh, and then uh, natural resource management has a vault toilet or two um, for ninety seven thousand and then labor expenses we talked about um, is consuming uh, the the difference there. When we talk about accounting for the American Rescue Plan Act or parpa dollars, this is what it looks like and how we have spent and encumbered funds over the years. Uh, and so therefore, uh, we're expecting about two point three million as an unrestricted uh, remaining fund balance that uh, of course, once that's gone, that's gone. Uh, and uh, and so it's important for us to kind of, you know, consider the use of those funds as one time use uh, and not used, used, being used for ongoing operations because it will will run out. So uh, just lastly, I wanted to thank a lot of folks uh, for their uh, time and work on creating this budget. Uh, there is a lot of work that goes into it and uh, couldn't be done without all of the folks that are up here on the, on the screen. We have um, you know, the, the county board, certainly your direction, your guidance and your support is critical. Um, the management team and the budget committee together. Uh, also the finance team who churns all this information, does this worksheets and all that stuff, Jody and Sam and her team have to do an incredible job on that. And then Diane, who's, you know, constantly working behind the scenes, making it all look good and come together and reconcile things. So we're, we're very grateful and appreciative of all of that. So uh, essentially my presentation covers your first two items on your agenda this evening, uh, items A and items B on the hearing. So if you uh, want to open the hearing and take uh, comments of those two IAs, you can take them separately and then vote on them together or possibly separately. Uh, and then of course, we have the proposed fee schedule, uh, which I'm not talking about at this point in time, but we can bring up after these other two items have been addressed. And then certainly the TIP is on the agenda for consideration as well. I'll stand for any questions you might have before we move right and open the public hearing.
Okay, there are questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair. Well, Tom, you said that we don't have any control over, you know, our our electricity prices and whatnot. It's kind of curious, have we um, researched any solar energy or or anything alternative?
Excellent question. I I I can't tell you that we have researched uh, solar or geothermal or that kind of thing. But what I can tell you is that we've tried to mitigate the increases in electricity um, by making conversions. So buying more efficient um, equipment, we've done a lot of LED change outs. For example, this room was changed out not too long ago to all LEDs. Uh, that also helps drive down costs. We have also got rebates for that work too, so that's been helpful. So, you know, we can't control what they're going to charge us in a rate standpoint, but we are trying to mitigate that as much as we can on making conversions and stuff. I don't believe, um, we could talk with Steve Shadr, our facilities director, but I don't believe that solar would be reliably uh, cost effective. Um, and uh, I think geothermal is going to be especially for retrofitting kind of out of the question. So there are some of those things that, you know, maybe on a new bill, and we've talked about this from the jail, like should we go geothermal or should we go solar, or should we do some of that? It's not yet proven out to be um, uh, advantageous enough to stick into the design. So I don't know if that helps provide a little bit.
That helps.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tom, did you have?
Pardon me?
You're. You're done with your part, right?
I'm done with my part. It's it's time for the public.
Right, is there any public here that would like to address uh, the board with any questions they have? Doesn't look like it, so I think we can go ahead with first part of this, right? The adoption of the twenty twenty four property tax levy resolution?
Your chair, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty four property tax levy resolution.
Is there a second? Discussion? Kim?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just want to uh, acknowledge, you know, the management team, the the new commissioners, um, you and uh, Tom and and staff on uh, on the budget that they prepared. I know it's not an easy task and a lot of, a lot of folks are are having to tighten their belts, you know, um. When I first uh, joined the board, you know, a number of years ago, I think our our budget was like seventy million. So to see it, you know, increase, you know, thirty million in ten years is is alarming. Um, but I, but I do understand that a lot of it goes to, you know, our staff and and we need to uh, continue to support our staff. Um, because they make our jobs easier, you know? So, um, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, second part?
Here, I'd make motion to approve the twenty twenty four budget resolution.
There's a second. Discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I also just want to acknowledge uh, the fact that staff has went above and beyond uh, helping us craft this budget and uh, it was a pleasure serving with Commissioner Carlson and our auditor Jody Treat and everybody on the on the budget committee and um, I'm proud of this budget. I think it invests in our workforce and in the future and and uh, um, you know, it certainly acknowledges that um, costs are going up, you know, inflation is up. Um, a lot of this is is due to uh, um, technology costs increasing and fuel. Um, but I feel like uh, um, we're doing our fiduciary responsibility here, uh, and uh, so I just want to thank everybody for, for uh, helping put together a budget we can be proud of.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. All right, then we have the adoption of the twenty twenty four proposed fee statement. And did you say, Tom, you had something else to say about that?
Not necessarily. I think the fee schedule speaks for it still, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept this uh, fee schedule?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? And looking through it, it looked like uh, it was kind of common sense as far as what was increased and uh, not as ma- not uh, not many changes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Uh, adoption of the transportation improvement plan.
I was paying attention this time.
That's good.
Uh, the proposed uh, transportation improvement plan was given to the board back in August. And we had the road tour in October. And I have submitted the very similar one that was initially proposed. I will point out uh, two changes to the proposed one. One, one change, but one that's going to be a, a, an end change here. But the one change is since August, we have received another uh, grant. It is a thirty thousand dollar state grant that is to help us apply for federal grants. And so that project I have added into the five year plan. Um, it is specific for trying to apply for federal grants to improve. It will be twenty one from Tranq County one ninety seven up to Annabelle. Uh, we did go through that on the road tour and I pointed that out, but that, that is an addition to the, this final five year plan that's being proposed from the draft one. The other item would be the pedestrian bicycle bridge, the trail bridge that is proposed out on thirty nine, the scenic highway is not going to be able to happen in twenty four as it is sitting here right now. Uh, we have had that project in the five year plan and we keep moving it back. But uh, just again, kind of since that August timeframe, we have not been able to get to the point where we can proceed with that project. We're still in the development of uh, with that project, we are working with Meach Lake Band to try to get that project to move forward. And so it's still happening, it's just won't happen, just won't happen in twenty four. So it'll probably again be pushed to twenty five. But those are the two changes uh, to the preliminary uh, transportation improvement plan. Again, you were given a colored copy of the the plan, the changes from the previous plan that was approved are in yellow. So those are the new projects that are in there. Uh, orange was just highlighting the ones that changed from one year to another year in that plan. So everything was, um, again, similar to what was proposed on the draft one, so I'm not gonna.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the uh, transportation improvement plan that was.
Second? I'll second it.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just have a question, just out of curiosity. Why would there be federal monies available for the section from one ninety seven to Annabelle Street on old, like, on the old, old seventy one, uh, county twenty one?
There are different uh, federal programs out there, the latest, or sorry, the last federal transportation uh, bill that was passed has all kinds of additional money, but they're in specific pots. Um, and that would be a, a high use corridor for us. Uh, and so they look at other things like, uh, I'm just trying to think of a grant that I'm going to be applying for is uh, called the raise grant. Again, I don't know off the top of my head what it stands for, but it's it's a, a, a high use corridor, a business, you know, uh, economic development along a corridor. And so that type of project would fit. We are also, it's got a sidewalk and maybe looking at potentially extending that sidewalk or a trail. And so that, again, that fits in there also with the you know, safety, there's a different safety, federal safety grant out there. And so those are the two um, federal programs that we're going to be applying for is the, the raise grant and the safe routes for all is the other one.
Okay, I just, you know, remembering like when we did the, the, the county thirty nine, the, the scenic highway, because it was adjoining a lot of federal state forests or federal forest land that we were able to get like a million dollars for for each section of that project. And and I was just thinking, well, there's nice forests next to, next to this one, but so there's other, other pots of money.
There's a lot of federal pots of money out there.
Okay, thank you.
Keep looking for more. Any more discussion?
Oh, Mr. Chair, uh, I, I think uh, tonight's meeting reminded me that I need to uh, schedule uh, an high appointment and maybe uh, uh, hearing test because I I don't know if I see in county row thirteen on that uh, updated plan.
He talked to me separately about sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Mr. Chair, excuse me. If I could add to this discussion, please.
Sure.
I realized earlier walking into the admin building tonight that all I wanted for Christmas was Roosevelt Road added to the five year.
We each have our wish list.
Oh, wait a minute, what about Lakewood?
All right, I'll ask for, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. All right, then we will move back, don't we, at this point?
The next item, uh, motion to a hearing.
No.
No, we're not, we're, we're.
No, we're not, we're, we're.
We, where we can be. I think we're re. Public hearing is now closed. Okay.
And on the item twelve, Dave, the.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution in support of the local Bemidji post office.
Okay.
Mister Chair, I would second that, but I would ask. So we could, the wording right at the very top was said by adoption of consent agenda. Might have to, that wording might have to change a little bit by other than that. Because it's not, we're not doing it on.
Right.
But other than that.
That all right?
I would second that.
Okay. Discussion?
And Mister Chair, if I could speak to the motion uh briefly, um. You know, I I I think it's uh important that we. Uh, acknowledge the. The difficult situation that's happening uh with our local Bemidji post office and. And the frustration of the workers, uh how they're understaffed and uh, you know, I. Uh, we know we have support from uh senators Clovishar and and Smith and. And I thank them for that. Uh, I'm not sure rep- where Representative Pete Staber is on this, uh, but I think. By us creating awareness of the issue, um, this will help him also advocate. I think the ball's kind of in. Uh, in his court, in the Congress's court, in the postmaster general right now to uh uh resolve the situation in a. Timely matter and one that's uh fair to the workers and and their rights as employees. So, um. Appreciate my fellow commissioner's support on this.
Hey, anyone else?
Mister Chair, I I would like to have the uh representative Staber did have a a representative there, just like um. Clo- Clo- uh Clovishar and and Smith, um, one of his people was there as well and and taking down notes and and that to bring back to him as well. So. I think we had good representation and and I think it's well supported by everybody because it's affecting everybody. Um, it's an essential service that needs to be um given that kind of respect. Thank you.
Okay, Tim?
Well, well, Mister Chair, um, I I did miss the the presentation, but. Um, I think one of the things that really solidified my support for for this resolution was. Um, on my way to the meeting tonight, I actually, you know, seen a a mail carrier still out, you know, after five o'clock. So I mean, I think something really needs. Needs to be done and and I'm hopeful that with all the support from the community, you know, the the um. Elected officials, that something will will uh help to improve things for for everybody in our community.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. Now the administrators report. Do you have other things, Tom, to share with us?
Always. Thank you, Mister Chair. I'll try to keep it brief. Um, so a couple of things, uh, we've been continuing to make progress on the uh county's new website. Uh, it has not launched yet. We're hoping to do that fairly soon, uh, but it's progressing very nicely. Uh, Diane uh Mo is doing an excellent job leading this project for the county. And uh, she will have a presentation for you at the next meeting. Uh, where she's going to preview some of the changes to the website, give you a feel for what it looks like. Um. And uh, there are some limitations with the type of design that we've chosen and the the way it sort of works and functionally, we're kind of locked into some stuff. So. I just want to give you a preview of the preview and say, yes, it's going to be super fun to see and all that stuff, but. Might want to be careful with how much change that you might want us to make because some of that might not be possible with uh. With the platform that we have and the design template that's being selected. So, but I think you're going to be pleased. It's very contemporary and um. Actually pretty modern in regards to how other websites um are are moving and in this direction. Um, right now we're reconciling uh reconciling content, developing and editing existing content. Uh, testing links, doing all of that sort of stuff, getting forms updated. I mean, this is a huge, 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 huge endeavor. Um, and it's just, I just a testament to how dedicated Diane is and how tenacious and. Precise she is with all of her uh with her stuff. She's the perfect person to lead this project. So we're lucky to have her. Um, also want to let you know, uh, mentioned, we were distributing service awards. Uh, we did that last week as well as uh delivering ice cream to every staff member. You might recall, we recognize service awards on the fives, five, ten, fifteen years and that sort of stuff. Um, I appreciated Commissioner Carlson joining in. He was able to spend a day with us doing that as well. Uh, and it meant a lot to the to the uh to the staff. We've talked about really creating a more formal way to do this. Uh, kind of like what we used to do previous before the pandemic. Where uh we can have just one single event, have everybody there and have the commissioners have an opportunity to all be there if they if they choose. Uh, but the challenge for us is where would we do that, that we could accommodate all those folks? So we're going to be working that issue out and um. And seeing what we can do, but that that's our goal for next year to be able to make it more inclusive of all uh staff and. Elected officials and 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 that sort of thing. Um, also wanted to just let you know that I participated with several members. I think we had eight or ten folks that went on the Moose Lake Correctional Facility tour. Uh, including Commissioner uh Sumner and Commissioner Carlson. Uh, to look at the sweat lodge and a number of other features at the correctional facility, ask questions about how some of the um. Some of that infrastructure um is operationalized and and that sort of stuff. It gave us a really good perspective as we use, as we move forward rather in the design of our our jail. Um, that particular issue at some point will come before the board. We know it's a an important issue and the board will make a decision sort of on some of these these more. Um. Important kinds of uh design elements as we move forward. So I imagine that the that will probably occur, maybe. I I I'm not sure exactly when. I have to talk with um with Ben and stuff. I think there's some additional information that we want to update our um. Previous memo, I guess, that came from uh Ben Mattson on the project. So. Um, speaking of the jail, we did have the C Mar, which is the construction manager at risk RFP, which stands for request for proposal. Giving those acronym definitions for the folks in the audience who may be interested, but. Uh, those proposals, um, the 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 request for those proposals was issued on November seventeenth. And we advertised on November nineteenth, twenty sixth, and December third. The dent line for questions to us on the proposals was December fourth. We had four questions that were asked, are pretty benign questions. Which means, uh, at least we interpret that to mean that the RFP was pretty clear, uh, which is always a good thing. Uh, we responded to those questions on December sixth and responses, uh, meaning the proposals were due. To the county on December eleventh, which is um uh just come and gone. So we did receive three um proposals from various firms. The selection committee is going to meet this Friday on December fifteenth to review those proposals. And create a list of firms that we would like to interview. Um, it's possible we may not interview any firms as well. I mean, uh, it could be that there's such a strong contender that. Um, we just immediately go into contract negotiations with them. Um, but it it's conceived that we may have an interviewer or two. Um, maybe more and uh and that interview is scheduled for Thursday, December twenty first. Uh, from that, we will go into contract negotiation. That will take a couple of weeks. Typically, these contracts are. Pretty lengthy. There's a lot to look at, a lot of legal stuff going on. And of course, we have to have um our legal review of those and that sort of stuff. But essentially what we're expecting is that we'll be able to bring. A negotiated contract uh to the board for their consideration on January the sixteenth. Uh, the um anticipation is that we'd be able to give an NTP. Or, sorry, a notice to proceed on January the seventeenth if the board does um approve the contract. So that's the process there. Speaking of the jail, because it has dominated our work um for the most of this year, uh, the Crown property is uh something I want to just brief you on. All investigative work on the property has come back favorable and it's complete. So we're done with that. Um, we conducted a boundary survey. I did authorize. Uh, surveyors to go out and do a boundary survey to clarify some of the property limit uh questions and 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 such that we had. Uh, and including the easements as well. So uh, seemed to be maybe a couple of questions about, you know, certain sizes of easements and location of property lines and stuff. So I said, well, let's just get that all worked out. In a, in a formal survey. So we've done, we've conducted the formal survey and and we found that. Uh, there are probably a few adjustments we need to make to um the property, uh, but I'm told that uh nothing is uh, you know. Impacting the constructability of the site or the usability of sites, more perimeter kind of stuff. So we're not concerned about that. But we just may have to go back and clean some things up that are historic from previous transfers and previous breaking up of the property and that kind of stuff. So. Um, I've scheduled closing for that property on Friday, December the twenty second um at one o'clock. And I wanted to just ask you if you wanted me to sign the documents on behalf of the county, if you want the board chair to do it or someone else for that matter. Um, just so we get it on the calendar. Um, so I'll pause there and let you debate that question uh so that we know.
I would.
Okay. Okay, perfect. So uh Wednesday, or excuse me, Friday the twenty second at one P M at Sathery Title. All right. Yeah, we should do that. I'll 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 join you, Mister Chair, so I can get those. Yeah. Excellent. Um, the last update I had for you is um a reminder that the next board meeting is only one week away, right? Because we moved this one. And so uh it is the last scheduled meeting of the year. Um, and uh, so that's all I had for you in tonight's update, unless you have questions for me.
Yeah, I just have a question on the website. Is it going to be mobile and tablet friendly or not?
Yes.
It will be. Okay, good.
Yep. In fact, um, one of the things we intended with the contract is to make sure it was mobile friendly and also to make sure it was um ADA accessible.
Perfect.
Which sort of sounds odd for a website, right? Because you think mostly of physical handicaps and stuff, but you know, for the blind and color and those kinds of things, we. We also want to make sure that it works for all citizens. Mm-hmm.
You have a question?
Mister Chair.
Yes.
So uh, Tom, it sounds like uh Diane is is really uh great. I wish she does, you know, with the. Uh, county website and I'm, you know, I'm glad that you asked the question because that was my my concern too. I mean, like sometimes at night I I, you know, look through the county website and I just. I can't get it on 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 my phone. So it's it's good to hear that. It's kind of frustrating because then I'll have to go to the to the to the internet browser and then look up numbers and and things like that. So it's kind of complicated, but. I think uh maybe maybe a little bit more importantly is is I'm wondering if um. If uh Diane has the ability to to uh help me out and and and. Uh, trying to, you know, age me, you know, and and my portrait in in some in some way. You know, because I think those were like taken ten years ago or eight years ago or something and I. I was probably twenty eight or something. It looked like a little little baby, so. All right. Yeah.
I'll give you some of my grade.
All right. Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, run through quickly here. Finding Commission, um, John Simmons, I was at last meeting. Retired from our finding commission. Um, Castle Grove Fire, we have. Share that. We call the special board meeting um to review, to try to get things in line for the fire chief's review. He was hired in in um. March or April, and we have to have our budgets done at the beginning of the year, so all the townships that are involved can get their their finances of. For that year. So it was just always behind, you know, so we wouldn't know how much to put in the budget because we hadn't done the review yet. So we we uh, we had a special meeting and got that uh. Done. We had a great news. Um, I met with the the fire chief and I and and Ernie um from our board. We met with. Uh, the Nielsen Foundation and we were awarded a three hundred thousand dollar grant towards the new fire hall as well as another fifteen thousand dollar. Uh, grant to help us with grant writing for the fire hall. So um. With that, three hundred thousand plus the two hundred fifty thousand that we got from Enbridge, we're we're well on our way towards. Um, getting the getting the funds for the new Newcastle Fire Hall. Um. We had a a special airport authority meeting that John and I attended. That was a closed session, so we can't actually say anything about it. Um, I attended the the U S Postal Service listening session and thank you, Commissioner Gould, for uh for drafting that resolution tonight and and that that was. Very timely and and appreciate you doing that. And uh, Brian Olson and I from the Saltways Committee attended the Port Hope um town board meeting to discuss the the uh remote transfer site there and we are. Uh, they were favorable towards it. Uh, just wanted that they want to check with the Minnesota um. Association of Townships attorney to make sure that there isn't any issue with them um. Donating that that parcel of property to the county um or or what, you know, what legal issues that might be um with that donating that piece of property for the new transfer site there. And that is my report. Thank you.
Mister Chair. If I may, um, Mr. Gosby, I think it was my maybe a month or two ago, I got a. An int- interesting phone call in regards to uh contrails. And the the caller was wondering if there's anything that I can do about it or what, you know, if we can, okay. And uh, so I I mentioned that I'd I'd bring it up uh. During our meeting, you know, and now. Is is there anything we can do? You know, I'm I'm not too sure. Yeah. Or even as a board or or as an individual, yeah, I'm not.
That's FAA.
And. And and that's what I told him is, you know, FAA, you know, probably has, you know, authority and regulation, you know. Not too sure what we can do at at the county level, but, you know, I remember I. And also, uh, you mentioned funding for a fire hall. I'm kind of curious how that works because uh. And in my district, I have a couple of uh volunteer fire uh departments and and they're. Constantly fundraising and things like that. Um. How how do you access this type of funding to to make improvements and and maybe some? I can kind of bring that back to.
Yeah, we're we're actually um looking to build a new fire hall. We've currently leased the existing old building from from this um. I believe it's the city of Castle Lake and they would like it backed to use as a, I believe, a public works facility. And it's not big enough for us to have like a ladder truck or any other equipment. It's it's, you know, really. Old and small and and so we really want to have a a new facility so we can have all those other accommodations of. Um, have a separate room for the all their all their clothing comes in from a fire and it's right next to where they eat their lunch. I mean, it's just toxic stuff and. And so not a not a great situation the way it is now. So they want to look at building a new fire hall. And so we're just uh knocking on every door we can to try to get. Get funding, whether it's um the Nielsen Foundation or the or, you know, like say Enbridge or any any government funding. And now we're going to hopefully be able to get somebody to help us with grant writing for it. So.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Now, thank you, Mister Chair. In the interest of time, I'll pass. Well, I yield my time to Commissioner Sumner.
Thank you. Uh, being that I missed the the uh first part of the meeting, I am. This maybe get an update on commissioner committee assignments and and no, I was kidding. Um, I have a, I attended the uh AMC uh tribal uh tribal affairs forum last week. Um. Along with Commissioner Gould, uh, thanks for being there. Uh, this week I have the uh Black Duck Fire, no, Black Duck Ambulance. And the jail steering committee and and management team tomorrow. So, um. Sounds like a pretty busy rest of the week, so. That's my report. Thank you.
Are you able to make it to Black Duck on Thursday?
Yeah.
You don't have conflict?
Okay.
Um, a lot of the regular committee meetings lately, K L S, uh, BiCap, both house. Beltre M E H R A, um, a lot of meetings with the um statewide elected officials lately, uh, including I was able to. Um, pull Governor Tim Walls aside for a few minutes and chat with him and put a plug in for our county needs uh. Down at the AMC conference two weekends ago. Um, and uh, so, um. One other thing I wanted to mention was uh, my wife and I, we bought a a a table for the annual chamber gala uh last week and uh. It was nice to have our county administrator, Tom Berry, uh, join us for that and and his wife as well. And and uh, there was some B S U folks uh that were with us as well and. And I was pleasantly surprised to, uh, well, I already knew, but um, they talked about during the. Program how uh they are bringing Bemidji Day at the Capitol back this year. And and I think Commissioner Carlson and I have been uh. Already volunteered to work on that committee. Uh, so uh, it's something to look forward to, uh, another way to um. You know, plug the county uh this year down at the Capitol, so. That's it.
Their motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
You got your.